Okay, testing podium mic test one, two, three. Podium mic test one, two, three. One, two, three. Manager mic test one, two, three. Manager mic test one, two, three. Beatty mic test one, two, three. Beatty mic one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
Howdy. You look like you're ready for the cold weather.
Trying to stay partially warm up there. County clerk test one, two, three. County clerk mic test one, two, three. How mic, oh, here we go. How mic testing one, two, three. How mic testing one, two, three. Meitzner mic testing one, two, three. Meitzner mic test one, two, three. Dennis mic testing one, two, three. Dennis mic one, two, three. Lopez mic testing one, two, three. Lopez mic test test one, two, three. Attorney mic testing one, two, three. All right, one more mic check. One, two, three. Can you hear me Ben? Testing one, two, three. Podium mic testing, testing. I should have it up on my end as well. Awesome.
Are you?
Good.
Good.
Okay, here we go. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the last meeting of the year, the Wednesday, December 20th. We have a nice audience here and thank you for those that are watching on KPTS and our YouTube and Facebook Live. So, happy holidays to everybody and Merry Christmas. And with that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Invocation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Just wanted to put a quick reminder out there that today, Wednesday, December 20th, is the final day to pay first half of personal and real property taxes. You can pay those in person in this building, 100 North Broadway, Suite 100, at the Treasurer's Office or online at sedgwickcounty.org/treasurer. Starting December 22nd, Sedgwick County Environmental Resources is again providing several drop-off sites for Christmas tree recycling. After you've enjoyed your real Christmas tree this holiday season, take it to one of the many locations around Sedgwick County from now until June 22 to be converted to mulch. You can find those locations online at our website. And then another reminder, Sedgwick County offices will be closed Monday, December 25th and Monday, January 1st in observance of Christmas and New Year's. Emergency services are available by calling or texting 911. And that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. And Nicole, I do have one question. You are not going to be able to answer it, but I want to make sure that we get the word out. There were some problems getting some of the tax returns out, or the bills out. I just got an email earlier this week that someone still hadn't received it. So, what I want to know, so we can put it out to the public, if you did not receive your tax return, are we going to charge them penalties? What's going to happen? Because it's really our fault, I think, that they didn't get out. And I want to make sure that we're not penalizing the citizens.
I will definitely pass your question on to the Treasurer and we'll get confirmation of what that looks like.
Okay, well, we need to get that word out.
Yes.
That's why I'm talking to you for Communications.
Yes, sir.
Because you're the one that's going to have to tell everybody what to do if they didn't get it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Don't see any, thank you, Nicole. All right, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, Commissioners and Public, we had a number of people sign up for Public on our signup sheet. A lot of them are about a zoning case that's later on in the meeting. So, does anybody here want to address the Commission that's not related to the zoning case? I assume in the zoning case, all those people will talk during the zoning case. So, if anybody's signed up that wants to address the Commission outside the zoning case? Don't see any? So, okay, we will close the Public Agenda. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item A. Accept the removal of Patricia Miller from the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item has proposed removal of Patricia Miller from the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board as recommended by Commissioner Lopez. The recommended action is to accept the removal.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I want to thank Patricia Miller for her time serving on this board, but with that, I will move that we accept her resignation.
Second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item B. Resolution reappointing Alex Dean to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in the First Class City Position Number One, Wichita.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. And if it's okay with you, I propose to take Items B, C, and D together. They all involve the same Advisory Board.
That makes sense.
All right, the first one of these, as the deputy clerk announced, is reappointing Alex Dean as a First Class City Position Number One, as recommended by the City of Wichita, to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee. Just a general summary of that committee's work amongst other responsibilities, they do prepare and review the solid waste management plan each year, which is a requirement under state law. The second item on this would be Item C, is a resolution reappointing Hannah Chegwin to the city of the First Class Position for the city of Derby, as recommended by them. So, that would again be a reappointment. Item D would be a resolution appointing Catherine Johnson to the recycling position as recommended by your environmental resources director, Susan Erlinwine. All three of those resolutions are in order and the recommended action is to approve them.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments about any of these appointments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Alex Dean, Hannah Chegwin, and Catherine Johnson, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Don't see any comment.
Okay, forty-five seconds, standing by. Thirty seconds. Okay, here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the last meeting of the year, the Wednesday, December twentieth. We have a nice audience here, and thank you for those that are watching on KPTS and our YouTube and Facebook Live. So, happy holidays to everybody and Merry Christmas. And with that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
invocation to be led by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Just wanted to put a quick reminder out there that today, Wednesday, December twentieth, is the final day to pay first half of personal and real property taxes. You can pay those in person in this building, one hundred North Broadway, Suite one hundred, at the Treasurer's Office, or online at sedgwickcounty.org/treasurer. Starting December twenty-second, Sedgwick County Environmental Resources is again providing several drop-off sites for Christmas tree recycling. After you've enjoyed your real Christmas tree this holiday season, take it to one of the many locations around Sedgwick County from now until June twenty-two to be converted to mulch. You can find those locations online at our website. And then another reminder, Sedgwick County offices will be closed Monday, December twenty-fifth, and Monday, January first, in observance of Christmas and New Year's. Emergency services are available by calling or texting nine-one-one. And that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. And Nicole, I do have one question, and you are not going to be able to answer it, but I want to make sure that we get the word out. There were some problems getting some of the tax returns out, or the bills out. I just got an email earlier this week that someone still hadn't received it. So, what I want to know, so that we can put it out to the public, if you did not receive your tax return, are we going to charge them penalties? What's going to happen? Because it's really our fault, I think, that they didn't get out, and I want to make sure that we're not penalizing the citizens.
I will definitely pass your question on to the Treasurer, and we'll get confirmation of what that looks like.
Okay, well, we need to get that word out.
Yes.
That's why I'm talking to you for Communications, because you're the one that's going to have to tell everybody what to do if they didn't get it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Don't see any, thank you, Nicole. All right, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, Commissioners and Public, we had a number of people sign up for Public on our signup sheet. A lot of them are about a zoning case that's later on in the meeting. So, is anybody here want to address the Commission that's not related to the zoning case? I assume in the zoning case, all those people will talk during the zoning case. So, if anybody's signed up that wants to address the Commission outside the zoning case, don't see any, so, okay. We will close the Public Agenda. Next item, please.
Appointments, Item A, accept the removal of Patricia Miller from the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item has proposed removal of Patricia Miller from the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board, as recommended by Commissioner Lopez. The recommended action is to accept the removal.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I want to thank Patricia Miller for her time serving on this board, but with that, I will move that we accept her resignation.
Second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries, next item, please.
Item B, resolution reappointing Alex Dean to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in the First Class City Position Number One, Wichita.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. And if it's okay with you, I propose to take Items B, C, and D together, they all involve the same Advisory Board. All right, the first one of these, as the Deputy Clerk announced, is reappointing Alex Dean as a First Class City Position Number One, as recommended by the city of Wichita, to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee. Just a general summary of that committee's work amongst other responsibilities, they do prepare and review the solid waste management plan each year, which is a requirement under state law. The second item, which on this would be Item C, is a resolution reappointing Hannah Chegwin to the city of a First Class position for the city of Derby, as recommended by them. So, that would again be a reappointment. Item D would be a resolution appointing Catherine Johnson to the recycling position as recommended by your Environmental Resources Director, Susan Erlinwine. All three of those resolutions are in order, and the recommended action is to approve them.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments about any of these appointments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Alex Dean, Hannah Chegwin, and Catherine Johnson, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Don't see any comment or any questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And Mr. Arnold, you're here to swear in? Anybody here? Any of those people? Oh, there's two of us here, okay. This is a very serious board, Mr. Cardinals.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution at the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee, so help me God.
Okay, congratulations.
Alex Dean with City of Wichita, I just want to say thank you for reappointing me to this board. I've learned a lot about what goes on in the county, and it's great to be able to network with everyone and make our recycling and sustainability efforts improved in the county. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Alex, for your service.
I'm Catherine Johnson.
Hi, Catherine.
And I would like to thank you for this appointment and the opportunity to serve Sedgwick County in this way, and I'm really looking forward to meeting and working with the members of the Solid Waste Management Committee in the new year. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Okay, with that, next item, please. Madam Clerk?
New business.
Wait, just a minute.
Apologies. Commissioner Dennis, to answer your question, constituents can go online and pay their bill without actually having a paper copy. They're also welcome to go into the Treasurer's Office. If they have questions, they can contact the office or the call center, the number is six-six-zero-nine-thousand, and the Treasurer's Office will work with those folks.
Okay, but if there's an emergency and they're going online, they're going to have to use a credit card, and they're going to charge them two-and-a-half percent or something like that interest, and so they're getting penalized in that case, too.
Well, they can call the office and work with the Treasurer's Department on that, the tax office.
As long as we're not penalizing anyone, I'm happy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole, for looking that up. Next item, please.
New business, Item E, Z O N twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-two-zero, Zone Chain Request in the county from S F dash twenty, Single Family Residential, to G C General Commercial to permit commercial parking area, generally located on the west side of North Ridge Road, within one-quarter mile south of West Forty-Fifth Street North, forty-four-thirty-five North Ridge Road.
Okay, before you start, I assume that many of you here have not been here before in a zoning case that are here to speak to us, so there's an order, and I'll just, and we'll remind as it goes. First of all, Commissioners will designate if they've had any ex parte communications with, either by written, or, so we'll, and then we will have a presentation, and the Commission will engage any questions to the presenter, and then the applicant will be invited to make any other comments in addition to that, and the Commission can ask questions to the applicant. Then after that, we will open it up for public comment, and that's when we will have public comment. We normally do anywhere from three to five minutes for public comment, since there's a whole, there's a lot of people here, more than we've had. We're going to ask, if one of you represents, a lot of you, they can, the first one could talk for five minutes, and then after that, we will limit to three minutes, because a lot of it's repetitive and will ask that we have, so. Then we'll close the public, we'll close the public comment section, and then we will ask either the applicant or the presenter from M A P C to come back and have some final questions back and forth, and then, and then the vote will happen. So, did I get all the steps right? Justin?
Chairman, I think that was sufficient, thank you.
Okay, all right, so first of all, ex parte communications. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I've had minimal ex parte communications. I did have a couple of emails, and that's the limit of my ex parte communications. It has not affected my decision.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
I have had ex parte communications, some emails, I had a meeting with the applicants, and, but it has not impacted my decision process, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty.
Chairman, I've had ex parte communications, I've had email correspondence and in-person correspondence with applicants and those in the protest area, and it has not caused any issues or conflict with my objectivity in the case.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I echo the comments of Commissioner Dennis, I have had minimal interaction with anybody on this case, I think just a couple of emails, thank you, Chairman.
And I've also had emails, I don't recall I've had any direct conversation with, but I have had ex parte communication via emails, and we will be, and I'll be eager to hear what the, what the presentation is, so we can try to come to a, to a decision today. So, with that, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners, Philip Zievenbergen with the Planning Staff. This item before you today, as the Clerk read was, Zone twenty-twenty-three triple zero twenty, it's a zone change request from S F twenty, Single Family Residential, to G C General Commercial. It's a five-point-two-nine acre property located on the west side of North Ridge Road, about a quarter mile south of West Forty-Fifth Street North. The property is developed with a single-family home, and they operate a rural home occupation. That means they're operating a business out of their home. In this case, the rural home occupation is relating to the parking or storage of commercial vehicles on the site. A commercial vehicle is defined as a vehicle that is twenty-six thousand pound gross vehicle weight rating or larger. The item is before you today, as a second round, you all considered it back in July and sent it back to Planning Commission for further consideration, and I'll get into those details in just a minute. The reason they're asking for the zone change is because they have more than one commercial vehicle, and the home occupation only allows them to have one, and with multiple, they needed to do something, and a zone change was the proper course of action in order to bring the use into compliance. They have been operating with these multiple vehicles for some time, they were cited by the county, they brought in the citation, and they started this action in a relation to rectify being out of compliance with the zoning code. This item was first considered by the Planning Commission back in May. At that time, it was staff's understanding, based on conversation with the applicant, that they were looking for a vehicle storage yard. A vehicle storage yard is the storage of operable vehicles, typically for more than seventy-two hours at a time. During that hearing, there was multiple individuals speaking against the application, most of them being neighbors, with concerns about impacts to their property and their welfare, and possible nuisance situations with noise and odor, among other things. Staff at the time was recommending a protective overlay, which would limit the uses to those in single-family residential S F twenty, in addition to the vehicle storage yard. It limited to the size in which they could park the vehicles, required a site plan, all standard screening and paving requirements were in place, and also limited to the use to require it to be a residential use on-site first, and this be associated with that. In May, the Planning Commission's recommendation was approval subject to the protective overlay. In July, the Board of County Commissioners considered the item the first time. Several members of the public spoke in opposition, stating the similar opposition as they did at the Planning Commission, with concerns about detrimental impacts to their welfare and their surrounding properties. During this discussion at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, it came pretty clear that vehicle storage yard may not necessarily be the most appropriate classification for the use that was going on the site. The ultimate action by the Board of County Commissioners was to send it back to the Planning Commission for further consideration, specifically asking us to clarify the use that was on the site. Following that meeting, staff reached out to the applicant and got a detailed description of how they're using their site. That description was included in your packet for your consideration. Based on their description, commercial parking area seems to be the more appropriate use classification for this, because storage implies that a vehicle is brought onto the site and left there for some time. When you think of somebody storing an RV or a boat or something like that, they either keep it there for the week during the summer, take it out on the weekends, or, you know, store it there for the off-season when they're not using it. Based on the description from the applicant, this is a business to where there is daily use of these commercial vehicles. Employees are coming on the site in the morning, starting up the vehicles, warming them up, leaving the site to do jobs throughout the city or county. They may come back to the site if their work order was complete or in between jobs, but ultimately, the vehicles are coming back at the end of the day, parked overnight, and the cycle starts the next day. So, the vehicles are in and out of the property daily, sometimes multiple times, and so storage is not really the right use of the term, and so we're now discussing an item related to a commercial parking area, which does apply to commercial vehicles. With that in mind, it went back to the Planning Commission in November. With the corrected understanding of a commercial parking area, again, several members of the public spoke with similar concerns, as we've discussed. The action of the Planning Commission at that meeting on November ninth was to recommend denial. So, the recommendation coming to you today from the Planning Commission is denial. Staff discussed a protective overlay with the Planning Commission during the meeting. It essentially was a modified one from the original one, just correcting the language to identify commercial parking area versus vehicle storage yard. But again, the action of the Planning Commission was to recommend denial. The findings they stated in support of their denial recommendation was that the requested use is not in character with the surrounding residential zoning and land uses. You can see here on the aerial map, we've got predominantly residential properties, several across the street, and the properties to the north and south have single-family uses on larger tracts of land. The property to the west is a single-family use, but obviously has a much larger tract of land as well. The zoning of the area, everything kind of in the peach color is the S F twenty, Single Family Residential zoning. This property here, on the kind of southeast of the property, is limited commercial with a community unit plan, but you can see on the aerial image, it is mostly undeveloped and is currently in agricultural field, so no commercial uses on the property at this time. One update to the map that just happened, and it's not in the presentation, I apologize, is this very corner property on the southeast corner, Forty-Fifth and Ridge, is commercial zoning at this time. We just got the affidavit publication, we're able to update the map, and it just didn't get quite into the presentation. It is not used commercially, there's a single-family home on it, they just primarily zoned it commercial to allow an off-site sign to advertise for housing development nearby. Other properties in the area, the property at K ninety-six and Ridge is the Vehicle Village Tours site, so that's a vehicle storage yard for large buses. It is zone limited industrial with a protective overlay. And then, south of K ninety-six, as we're all fairly familiar with, is a pretty large commercial corridor with offices and commercial uses. Other findings that they stated were permitting the requested use would have detrimental impacts on surrounding properties, approval of requests would have negative impacts on the welfare of nearby residents, and as well as the public opposition. That was an eight-to-three vote for denial coming before you this morning. The protest on this application, the period happened after the May Planning Commission meeting, it only happens once, and that protest stands after that protest period, there's not an additional protest period in November. The original protest on this was forty-six percent. After the Board of County Commissioners meeting in July, a, the northern property owner that abuts the site submitted a valid request to withdraw their protest petition, so the protest this morning is thirty-eight point seven-six percent. It is still above the twenty percent threshold, which requires four or five votes this morning if you were to move to approve the application. That's where we're at with the application today. I will go through the rest of the site photos, and I can stand for any questions that you might have for me. The comprehensive plan identifies the area for a mixture of residential and commercial uses, which generally identifies that commercial uses will likely be of lesser intensity, and any possible future residential uses could be more higher-density residential, knowing that it may be possibly mixed with commercial. This is looking west at the property, this is the residence that's there, and then this is how they would access to the rear of the site. Looking southwest at the property, more pictures of the side of the property, and these were, just full disclosure, these were sites, these were pictures that were taken prior to the May meeting, so there may have been changes on the site since then. This is looking at the property north of the site, and the residence that's on that property. This is the property south of the site, kind of looking to the northwest along the property line. This is property southeast of it, farther, closer to K ninety-six. And just some other residential properties in the area, again, this is the Village Tours at K ninety-six. And with that, I can stand for any questions you have for staff.
Okay, thanks, Philip, and I think it's, we have, like you said, we've seen this case before, returned it, and did some more modifications since whatever that was, and also, we, I think each Commissioner's been briefed at least one-on-one on the update and all the changes and the potentials, and so with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I apologize, I know you've all been briefed, but just for the record, I can go over your alternatives this morning.
Okay.
For your vote. So, again, the recommendation before you today was denial by the Planning Commission. To accept the recommendation and deny the application would take three of five votes. Because of the protest, an alternative for approval, subject to the protective overlay, which is the staff-recommended protective overlay, so if you were to vote to approve, that would take four or five votes because of the protest. And, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, do they have the alternative to send it back to Planning Commission again?
No, they do not have that option at this time, Philip.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, and so in our, in our packet, there was these three options, so just to make sure, so if we denied the zone change, which follows the M A P C recommendation, that's three votes or more, just a simple majority.
That's correct. Take the recommended action as three votes. To approve it, you'd have to override the protest petition, which would be four votes. I don't believe there are any other alternatives at this time, and I see Kirk Sponsel shaking his head, so I don't believe there's any other options, other than, if there would be a will of the Board to defer this item, but ultimately, a decision would be made on one of those two paths. I see Kirk approaching the podium, so he'll let him speak to it.
And Kirk Sponsel, just for clarification, Kirk Sponsel, Deputy County Counselor, I guess there is something of a subsection of the approval with four votes. It would also be within the purview of the Commission to approve the request with the protective overlay, but to in addition make changes to that protective overlay, installing different conditions, that would take four votes as well.
Okay, so that's the three options that we, Commission, have. Majority vote to deny the zone change, four out of five votes to approve it, and four out of five votes to approve if we even have some modifications. Okay. Is there any questions for Philip at this time? I might, I might have just one, I see in, in the, maybe the applicant, when they, if they're here, if they come up, I can, we can ask them, but it says, so there's no, it says in document, there's no commercial activity on this property, just commercial storage?
The commercial use on the property is the parking of the commercial vehicles. They do not, our understanding is that they do not use the site commercially. They have told us in the past that there are times that if a truck has a load and that truck breaks down, they may unload that truck's contents and load it onto a different truck, essentially transferring it, but the site is not used as a transfer station, they're not primarily bringing loads here to drop off and then pick up later. But otherwise, it's the parking of commercial vehicles, but no other type of commercial use other than that.
So, the application, from the applicant's perspective, is just for the storage of commercial vehicles?
Storage or parking of, yes.
And that's in the zoning code?
Yes.
Identified, okay. Thanks for helping clarify that for me. Any other questions? Mr. Howell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to reflect back on, just a question that was asked a moment ago. I think we revised this a long time ago, when I first became Commissioner, it required unanimous vote to do a certain action, and we visited that as a Commission and we changed it to a maximum of a supermajority, which was four votes. But at that time, I thought the second round to the B O C C had a declining vote requirement, I went from four to three on the second round. I vaguely remember, because that, because there's, it's conceivable here, we might not actually have a board that comes up with any decision, potentially, because these two, the options in front of us are, may not be the only thing that could happen here. So, if we don't find four votes, three votes as described here, you may end up with a impasse, I'm not sure what that happens, if it's denied by inaction, so to speak. If we don't get to one of these decisions today, what happens?
Kirk Sponsel, Deputy County Counselor, dealing concerning- Kirk Sponsel, Deputy County Counselor. Dealing, concerning this is a zone change request from, was it FF, SF-20 to GC? Then, actually, we're following the statutory applications at that point. Your question is hypothetically, if we were only to obtain three votes to approve instead of four, what would the result would be?
Yes.
So, that would actually not be a formal action by the Board of County Commissioners. But the logistical result of that is the application would inherently fail.
So, essentially, that's the same as the other option of voting three votes to deny would be essentially the same as not getting four votes to pass?
The end result would be the same.
Okay. I think that's the proper interpretation. I agree with what you just said. The only thing I would add to that is, I believe, back when we visited this, this change back, I think it was 2016 or 2017, probably 2016, I thought there was a declining vote requirement, so we didn't have to have four votes on this round. But I'm just curious.
But by statute, given the protest area, it's specifically written that we can't waive that or overcome that.
Well, your confidence assures me. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, could I make a quick comment on what Commissioner Howe asked about? I think, Commissioner Howe, you might be referring to the way the urban area of influence code had been worded prior to that point in time, the unanimous vote requirement. That did change, you're correct. But this matters, not in an urban area of influence.
I appreciate that clarity. Thank you so much, Counselor.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. And when you were mentioning that there's a vehicle storage now already in the area, I apologize, I was looking down when you were speaking, so I didn't see where that was located. Could you show us where that's at?
Yes, I'll go back through these pictures here. There's a, I wouldn't necessarily classify it as vehicle storage, but this use is happening, you can see by the eye and arrow here down, that it's south and east of the property, closer to K-96.
Okay. That's helpful. And then, on your protest map that I see, I don't see the old protest map. Was it just the property that's north of the applicant's property?
That is correct. I apologize for not including the original protest, but this acreage, this property here, abutting to the north, was the one that originally protested and then withdrew.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Could you, Philip, remind me, what in SF-20, what is permissible by right under home occupation?
Yes, a number of things are permitted by right by home occupation. In your self-report packet, there's an excerpt from the zoning code regarding this. Give me a moment here So, this is a, not an exhaustive list, because there's a caveat at the end that allows a zoning administrator to determine that there might be similar uses to ones listed. But things like animal care, limited in general, there'd be like vet services, antique restoration, assembly maintenance, repair of agricultural implements and equipment, assembly of small mechanical devices, electronic components, vehicle repair, limited in general, that's a mechanic shop, in addition to body work, so they can work on the vehicles. A property could have commercial vehicles on there for the sole purpose of fixing them, with that being the primary use of the site. Bed and breakfast, blacksmith shops with welding and heat treating for a machine shop, contractor storage, which has some limitations to it, custom butchering, household dining establishments, manufacturing and pottery, statues, figurines, things like that.
I think I got the drift.
Thank you.
Okay. On the, but they're permitted to one vehicle with gross weight over 26,000, is that correct?
For parking. So, since the primary use is to have the vehicle to be used off-site to run, you know, run loads and things, and then come back and park it, they're allowed one.
Okay. So, this is, this is what's hinging the, or delivering the zone request, the change with the protective overlay. So, that is, so what they're done by right, they've exceeded that limitation?
Correct.
Okay. So, there's no conditional use on the home occupancy, none of that. This would require a zone request, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, got it. That's all my questions for now.
Okay. Philip, we don't see any questions. More questions at this time, so, but stay handy. Is the applicant here and would like to address, the applicant can address? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Main, and I'm at 9726 West Murdock.
My name is Victor DeLeon, and I'm at 4435 North Ridge, and I'm a one applicant.
Okay.
All right. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Andrew Main, representing Victor and Andrea DeLeon, the applicants for the case. We believe in building partnerships and contributing to the community's growth. Our proposed commercial vehicle storage yard represents more than just sufficient storage. It's an opportunity to collaborate with local businesses, support existing infrastructure, and generate vital tax revenue. By supporting, by carefully integrating with the mixed-use environment and prioritizing environmentally safe practices, we aim to create a model facility that benefits everyone. This project is not just about us, it's about investing in the future of the community, one partnership and benefit at the time. I was doing some studying and trying to find some notes for this case, and I watched the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend. One of the quotes from Commissioner Howe on 7/19 was, I think there's some, I think there's some of the information we've received today is actually a little inaccurate, because it sounds like to me, it sounds to me like the way it was described by the opponents, that there's vehicles coming and going all day long, and this is a huge amount of traffic in and out of this property. I don't think that's what's going on here. They've got four vehicles, roughly, that leave the property in the morning, come back at noon, and leave again, come back in the evening. That's not a huge number of vehicles, and I think that we have people in the county that store their semi-truck at their home overnight. It happens all over the place, and this is not substantially different than that. With further looking into it, the modified protective overlay, 412, has had a lot of hard work put into it. It's been modified to visit, to meet our business needs and protect the neighbors, and minimize any negative impacts on the neighborhood. In addition to the overlay 412, protective overlay 412, we would like to, and it's been our plan the whole time, but to build a structure to store the vehicles, to store the trucks, also to work on them inside, and to store the construction equipment as well. As Philip was saying, with the home occupations and the zoning code, vehicle repair, that's something that we want to do, and we're allowed to do, but we want to do it maybe a little bit better, or quieter, or more convenient for the neighbors. So, we want to build this building. We want to work inside, just like the code says. Contractor storage, we want to abide by those rules too. We want to make sure it's put away and not being seen. Outdoor storage of the 10,000 square feet, that code, that's that one thing that we're working on here. We need to have four trucks, not just one. The Planning Department recommended denial based on those four things. The requested use is not in character with the surrounding residential zoning. The permitting the requested use would have detrimental impact on the surrounding property. The approval of the request would have negative impacts of the welfare of the nearby residents and public opposition. The request use is not in character with surrounding residential zoning. I don't know if I can, this is not my PowerPoint, but it's the same idea. This is the property right across the street from 4435. It's the big red, in the zoning picture, it's the big red 22 acres property right across the street, that for 50 years nearly, Ramona Hayes has been running a trucking operation with almost three times the trucks that we plan to use. The high number of zoning cases on Ridge Road this year, the commercial trucking business that operated across the street, Village Travels, The Edge Paintball, The Maze Airport and Tire Shop, and many other commercial properties lining North Ridge, north of K-96, including the four sand plants within two miles of the property, one of which is on Ridge, show that we are in character with the surrounding mixed-use area. The second thing, permitting the requested use would have detrimental impacts on the surrounding property. Again, for 50 years, Ramona Hayes and her husband had run a trucking business with many more trucks in that community.
16 trucks he used to have, that's what he say. You know, and they're closer to our house. They're closer, they're closer to their house. So, I just wonder why we only have four trucks. We trying to do the best. He used to have 16 trucks right there. He say he started five in the morning. They never complained anything. You can drive 96, and you can see the trucks right there, and a pair of vehicles right now for like 10 years. I just wonder why, you know, why they have all that stuff. Saying these people belong, belong to this neighborhood. You know, we don't do anything, it's work. We trying to do the best for them, you know?
So, this, to the second thing, permitting, when this request would have detrimental impacts on the surrounding property, there's, the trucking business across the street has not had detrimental impacts to the surrounding area. If anything, has laid groundwork for building this area into a successful mixed-use area that proves both commercial and residential can coexist peacefully. Approval of the request would have negative impacts to the welfare of nearby residents. The measures required by the protective overlay 412, and the addition of the building to house the trucks and equipment negate negative impacts on nearby residents. We understand that for 50 years, a trucking company has been running bigger than we are across the street with no reported negative impacts on the welfare of nearby residents. Public opposition. Noise. We understand that the noise is a concern for some residents. We plan to, once approved, take steps to further mitigate noise pollution. We're requiring all vehicles be turned off when not in use. We're moving the truck parking away from the south side to the north side of the property. We're building a, we would like to build a truck storage facility, a building to house the trucks and to work on them. We're in, we've already installed over 500 feet of screening on the south side of the property, and we will install the rest of the screening around the rest of the property in accordance to the business plan that I have already provided to you. We just haven't done it because we haven't been approved. It's a lot of money to spend and time, and we just want to make sure it gets approved. Pollution. We're committed to protecting the environment. We plan to implement our spill prevention response plan, including regular vehicle inspections for leaks, use environmentally friendly cleaning projects, products, dispose of all waste properly. And the building and the pad will aid in that as well. Visual impacts. We understand that the appearance of our facility is important to the community. We plan to install a screening, we plan to build the building, and we plan on keeping the property clean and well-maintained. Unauthorized activities were brought up. We are following all regulations and code for our property and do not engage in unauthorized activity. The commercial sale of vehicles does not take place. Those two trucks that you saw there, we went to buy one as addition to our, to our business, and the other one was offered at such a low price, we got them both.
We sold one.
And that's not our business plan, that's not what we do. Regarding the previous mention of tires in the planning case, there's no existing tire operation, there never will be. As you may recall from the last meeting, some concern around the outdated Google imagery showing piles of tires dated January 7th of this year. We understand that this raised question, and we want to ensure everyone has accurate information. The actual situation was that large piles of tires accumulated on a separate property owned by the DeLeons. When the tire shop, when the tire repair shop tenant vacated that property, the DeLeons responsibly removed and transported the tires to 4435 North Ridge for temporary storage. This was a short-term interim measure, as Victor DeLeon took full responsibility for disposing of the tires through the city's recycling program. The tires have already been removed from 4435 North Ridge months ago. This temporary, this temporary use demonstrates the DeLeon's commitment to responsible property management and adheres to city regulations. We hope this clarifies any remaining concerns and ensures you that no tire operation exists on the property. Comparable zoning cases, there's a comparable zoning case, Con 2022, 23, at 360 North, 167th Street West. They applied for commercial towing and recovery business. The staff recommended approval, and they involved, did involve concern about noise and visual impact, but eventually, it was approved with conditions requiring screening and a limit on number of vehicles. The southeast corner of 53rd and North Ridge, I'm sure you guys know, there's the new storage facility going in there. Thank you for my PowerPoint. So, this is the, this is that storage facility, that's 53rd on top and then Ridge running down, and they are zoned for general commercial. They have indoor/outdoor storage. Let's see, the northwest corner of... There it is. The northwest corner of Ridge and 45th, less than .2 miles from us, is zoned for commercial with warehouse, self-storage, and outdoor storage. With the warehouse storage being on Ridge Road. The southeast corner of North Ridge Road and 45th, right there, Philip already brought up with the sign, but it also does have in there, limited commercial for future commercial use. And then, of course, you just got to mention, right across the street, the Hayes Trucking has been there and operating, there it is. It's the one that says "commercial property" right here. I mean, that whole area has been running right there for many, many years. It is not currently running, I do understand that. Make that clear. So, in support of that, we received a couple of letters from the resident that withdrew their position to the property directly to the north in support of the property. Sherry, my name's Sherry Spire, and I live at 4525 North Ridge Road beside the DeLeons. They're a hard-working family, and I have not had any issue with them. A very few, a very few of the neighbors seem to believe they can control the traffic and develop new businesses and homes. I don't share that opinion. The DeLeon Trucking Business has every right to continue operating their business. I will be back in Wichita if you'd like to continue the conversation with her. The other letter that was provided to you was from, from Ramona, the owner of the commercial property for the trucking business. Two Phillips, and these were provided to you as well. I am in favor of Victor and Andrea's DeLeon getting this permit to have their resident zone commercial parking located at 4435 North Ridge. I have had a truck business at 4300 and 4356 North Ridge, just a few houses from the DeLeons, for 50 years, and not one of my neighbors has said a word about my truck, my trucks, and the noise they make. I talked to, I talked to the neighbors about this zoning, and they tell me they don't want these people living in our neighborhood. We, well, I don't feel this way. Victor and his family have as much right to live in our neighborhood as we do. Victor keeps his property clean and are good people. So, please today, give this young couple a chance to make a living and live on our street in peace. Hand in hand for a sustainable future. Approve our case and join the partnership. We've proactively addressed concern, we've showcased responsible operations. We believe our project offers significant community benefits. We're regulatory adherence, we have full compliance with zoning permits and safety environmental standards ensures responsible operation. Economic boost, new jobs, competitive wages, tax revenue, and local investment fuels economic development. Environmental stewardship beyond careful storage, we're committed to minimizing our footprint. We utilize building structures, waste recycling, and responsible practices to do, to be good neighbors and to protect the environment. We respectfully request approval for the zone change at 4435 North Ridge Road. Our commitment is to responsible operation and community collaboration will ensure a project that benefits everyone.
And let me just, for the record, the third person up here is an interpreter that was requested.
Yes, yes.
But so far... But so far, Mr. Victor, you've been able to speak, but, but for the record, just the interpreter, please introduce your name so we have it for the record.
My name is Alejandro Rivera.
Okay, we need address also?
I appreciate for all of your time and for the waste of time that we have gone through.
And, uh, all, many of the things that they were not true, we wanted to clarify, uh, everything that we weren't doing and all of this.
All right.
We weren't very happy about it, but we appreciate that.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we will see now if there's any questions to the applicant from the commission at this time. Are there any? So far not. I will ask one question, um, and it may end up needing Philip also, but I don't know. There was a, on our, in our agenda packet on page twenty-three and twenty-four, there's a letter, it looks like from the De Leon family to, uh, Philip. So it says things like, uh, your hours of operation are Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM. You do talk about moving, uh, you kind of moving all that to the, uh, storage area would be moved westerly. Uh, the screening located on the north southeast side of property will, and, uh, the storage will be moved more westerly. Screening, blah, blah, blah. So is that part of what, Philip, is that what, is that required for them to do that? Or is that something they're just saying they're going to do?
That letter that you're referencing was the detailed description that they had for their, um, operation. The protective overlay, um, did not have hours of operation included. Um, the protective overlay four twelve is included in the November ninth MIPC minutes, which are in your packet. Um, it was not included in the full agenda report since the recommendation from the planning commission to you was for denial. But if it comes to the point of needing clarification on what the details of the protective overlay are at, at future time in the meeting, I'd be happy to clarify those at that time.
Okay, all right. Uh, might be a question or two, Mr. Beatty.
Yeah, uh, Philip, question real quick. In the protective overlay, the commercial parking area is restricted to ten thousand square feet in size. It says the parking area and driveway shall be paved with an all-weather surface. What, what is that? What is an all-weather surface?
An all-weather surface, uh, high level view is a, a certain thickness of gravel. The zoning code has specifications on what, um, is considered an all-weather surface as opposed to just dirt or grass or something like that. So there needs to be a layer on top, um, that is of a certain thickness of gravel.
Okay, uh, second question, and, and I might be skipping ahead, but it might be pertinent since the applicant's there and could answer with some clarity. What are they permitted by right in the protective overlay with maintenance and repair and things of sorts? What, obviously, we're talking about commercial storage, a commercial parking area. What are they permitted to do in the protective overlay for repair, maintenance, things of that sort?
They are allowed to maintain those trucks onsite by right. Um, one, there, if the trucks are onsite, the maintenance is ancillary or accessory to what would be the permitted use if it's approved. Um, in addition, there's kind of that overlay, overlap, I should say, of what's allowed in the rural home occupation of, apart from commercial vehicle parking, they would be allowed, uh, vehicle repair anyway. Um, so.
I think that's my challenge is are we canceling the home occupancy and doing a protective overlay or is it, I mean, what overlap is there? I think that's.
There, there is, there will always be a bit of an overlap. The zone change today allows them to, is, would permit them to park additional commercial vehicles for these, the trucking operation. Where the overlap is, is it's still a home occupation, it could be considered a home occupation. Um, if they fix other vehicles, it's still a rural property. Um, the zone change, well, zone change to general commercial is no longer a residential property, but there's still residents on there, people are living on there.
So there's home occupancy guidelines that, that exist.
Yeah, there's still an overlap.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions at this time. So, uh, Mr. Andrew and Mr. Victor, if you want to be seated, we will go to, and you may want to stay halfway close in case we end up coming back to you. So we will go to the, uh, next, we will go to the, uh, public comment section on this. Um, we did have, like I said, a number of people signed up. Is there any one person that you all agree could address us for five minutes and then we'll have, we'll go in order for the other three? Or you guys want to go in the order it was signed up? I'll invite anybody that wanted to speak, that thinks they have five minutes to speak. Okay, all right, you're all being very kind so far. We'll go with the list. Um, first on the list to, uh, address this is Jim Nichols, followed by Jan Nichols. Again, state your name and address and the clerk here will have a timer and they'll give you like a thirty-second warning.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Merry Christmas, first of all. Uh, I'm Jim Nichols. I live at forty-four twenty-five North Ridge Road. I'm just, uh, next door to him and I've been there forty, almost forty-two years. And, uh, this has been a ten-month ordeal. We first started with, uh, Storage Yard. His application, Commercial Storage Yard. He had five trucks, two Bobcats, in and out, all day long. They brought dirt, rock and sand in. And then, uh, this body here sent it back to Metropolitan because of some concerns. And the next, uh, letter that came out August fourteenth stated, I'll quote, "The more appropriate use was construction sales, service, outdoor storage, commercial parking," and the applicant denied that. He didn't want that. So he postponed that. So then he come up with parking area. So we went from yard to area, which is two different words, but means the same to me. And that business is all run out of storage. I, I live right next door and, uh, it's just constant, in and out, seven days a week. Uh, what you just heard was a lot of, uh, false information. Mrs. Hayes down there on the corner, Dawn died about seven years ago. They haven't ran that trucking business probably for fifteen years. And he, he was a lot quieter than what he is. So that was all false information. Like I say, we have a lot of protesters, the noise is tremendous. The backup bells, the impact wrenches, and we've all been there decades living in that area. I'm also concerned about, they, they got this power washer and they wash these big old oily trucks and our groundwater is at six feet. And I'm afraid of the groundwater contamination. We're all on wells out there. And so what we got, we went from yard to area. That don't make no sense to me. But the, the middle application where he had, uh, construction sales, service, outdoor storage, commercial parking, that fit his description perfect. But he seen that and, uh, he didn't like it, in my opinion. Is there any other questions you have?
Okay, Mr. Nichols, is there any questions? Uh, Commissioner Howell has a question for you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Mr. Nichols, I think this is the first time I've heard about the groundwater concern. Um, do, do you guys use this well water for drinking and bathing?
Yes, sir.
You don't have, you don't have a municipal water supply?
We, we're all on wells, we use it for drinking, bathing.
So you do not have a municipal water supply?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The, the county did put a main down in front of Ridge Road, a twenty-inch main, uh, for the people over on, uh, east side of Ridge, coming down forty-fifth for that development over there. But, uh, we're still on all, everybody's on well water.
Has there been an offer for, uh, residents of Long Ridge there to connect to the municipal water supply? Has that been offered?
No.
It has not been offered, okay. Have you ever had your water tested?
Oh, yeah. Not recently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But yeah, that, uh, that, a lot, a lot of the information you heard was, you know, they've been there five years. I've been there forty-two and that, that property down there on the corner they're talking about, it's way down on the corner by ninety-six. Uh, Dawn died five or six years ago and she's old, uh, getting up in her eighties and they don't do no operation now of that. Trust me, believe me. And another thing, they said that we didn't want them in the neighborhood. That is false. I am, I am not prejudiced from the, no, that, that kind of offends me because I'm not. And I don't know where they got that.
Okay.
I'll close with that.
Mr. Nichols, uh, Commissioner Lopez has a question. Mr. Nichols?
I have a question, but it's just about something you said, so I don't know if it would be directed to you or the applicant or Philip, I'm not sure who should answer this, but, um, dirt, rock and sand.
A little louder, I just start wearing hearing aids.
I'm not sure if my question is really directed to you or someone else, but just referencing something that you, a couple of things that you mentioned, the dirt, rock and sand, can we explain why there could be dirt, rock or sand on the property? Could we just have an understanding of, of that? I don't know if that would be the applicant's.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, at the previous meetings, uh, on the property, um, I had some pictures in the presentation, but you can see in, in the pictures that we have sheep and horse on the property, the sands used to go under the sheep and horse. Uh, just like if you've been to the zoo, you walk through the petting zoo, it's, it's there, so that's what we do. Uh, the dirt's there and has been there, uh, to bring up the land for preparation. For many years, we have a permit for that. Uh, and the gravel we bring in to spread along, uh, the property continually bringing and leveling the property, enhancing that all, uh, weather pad that we have. Um, but basically, when you drive, driving around on a gravel surface, it eventually unlevels itself. You re-spread rock, you put a load of rock down every month, so.
So that's for use of the property, right? That's not like, okay, that's helpful. Um, I did watch the meeting, um, where this was denied and one of the things that were, was brought up was the water. And so when we spoke last, Philip and, and sorry, I'm done, thank you. Um, I asked if Susan Erlewine, our environmentalist, could speak to water issues just to see if that's, if that's something we need to be concerned about or not, because I think that would be, um, really important to just have a better understanding. Can you, um, explain what she said about that?
She, she responded and said that generally, when there's county properties that are on well water, there's always the general concern that anybody who has a vehicle on the property, whether they're maintaining it, even it's your own personal vehicle or if that vehicle is leaking, there's always the possibility of contamination with groundwater if it were to seep that far down. Depends on how much obviously is coming out of the vehicles. Uh, her preference would be that if there's, um, significant maintenance being done where, you know, certain types of chemicals and things like that are being washed off of vehicles and things like that, that it should be done over like an impervious surface, so more of a monolithic type of paving, concrete, asphalt, concrete, something like that, um, and being captured to avoid larger amounts of, um, items coming off of like oil or antifreeze or things like that coming off of vehicles getting into the ground.
Okay, um, so what I heard from her was that unless they're using like, what is it, petrochemical, it really would have the same, um, environmental impact as like road runoff would have. So I mean, is it, because I, I would, Ridge is a pretty busy road.
Yeah, it's a very heavily trafficked road and any type of spillage coming off of a vehicle when it rains and gets washed into the ditches, that's seeping into the ground. Um, and so no, that's, you're right, that was part of her, her email was it essentially minor maintenance of vehicles on property generally has the same impact as, uh, road runoff from rains.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you so much.
Okay.
I might add one other thing. Uh, he put this, he, he went and got him some used tin and put up a fence halfway, halfway down to my pond. The posts are all different heights and it's different colors. You can see it from forty-fifth and that's going to hurt my property value right now. And it, it reminds me of what used to be on Hoover Road around the salvage yards. They put those fences up and, uh, it goes down probably about a hundred and fifty yards and stops, so I'll finish.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next up is Jan Nichols.
Can you state your name and address? I'm Janice Nichols at forty-four twenty-five North Ridge Road. And, um, I wanted to let everybody know that, you know, it's not just a come and go neighborhood around there. We live there, we've lived there forty-one years. Our neighbors all around that area, we've got thirty-seven years, fifty-five years, forty-seven years, fifty-nine years. We just want you to know that, you know, we've just all been there a very long time. And, uh, that, uh, we liked the area. We, we brought our, raised our boys out there and, um, now that we're protesting, we're getting more noise than ever because of us protesting. So, you know, if they're trying to be better about noise, then, you know, there's a problem, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any questions for, for Jan Nichols? I don't see any. Next up is, uh, Michael, I-M-B-E-R.
We meet again. Can you hear me? Okay, I've got a loud voice and I say I want to make sure everybody hears me. Um, well, um, my neighbors have, um.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Uh, Michael, I'm Imbert, I live at, um, forty-four, um, thirty North Ridge Road. That's right across the road from this guy. Um, so, you know, we, it's a direct impact, you know what I mean? Looking straight across it. Um, well, um, my neighbors, um, Nichols, um, you know, they've said a lot. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, something, um, and I just came back from a funeral two thousand miles away. You know, buried my mother, ninety-four years old. Um, I live with a ninety-seven-year-old, my mother-in-law and, um, you know, before, um, they came across there, you know, five years ago, um, it was a nice peaceful neighborhood. Um, I want my mother-in-law to, you know, live to reach a hundred. But, um, you know, this noise that, um, and, and also, you know, talking about peace and harmony. Um, this guy, you know, I was out in my front yard, you know, taking pictures of trucks or whatever. You know, that's not against the law. And, um, he drives his truck out, sticks his head out the window and cusses me in a loud profane manner, um, which was not appreciated. And then the other day I was out in my yard just looking at my car and, um, some guy, I don't know who it was, it must be him, it sounds like the same voice, says, "Hey, hey." So, you know, why, why is he shouting at me, you know, "Hey, hey." So, you know, this is not, um, what do you call it, you know, somebody who wants to live in peace. And then also, um, the other day when we had the snowstorm, he was in the front yard, I don't know, it must be him, in a ATV or RTV or whatever they call them, going, "Zzzzz," doing all kind of whirlies for like, um, you know, like forty-five minutes. Um, you know, that was just to aggravate people, you know? It's an annoyance, you know? It's not somebody having fun in the front yard. It's somebody making noise wanting to aggravate. Um, so like I said, you know, I want my mother-in-law to live until a hundred and all this noise and all these trucks going in and out and, um, you know, I don't think she should make it, you know, sir. I don't want to have to bury somebody else in their future, sir. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions? I don't see any. Next up is Tony Lux or Tony Lau, followed by Angel De La, De Leon. Is it Angel or Angel?
Good morning, my name is Tony Lux. I live at forty-four hundred North Ridge Road, right next door to Ramona Hayes. They have not operated out of there for probably twenty years. Uh, and there was never a noise, uh, I, I never had any trouble with them. And if they did move something, it was to take it to their son's house down south. He has a property down there that they stored on. Uh, my number one concern was the groundwater. I heard him say, "Well, it's no worse than what would run off the street. We have storm drains out there, it doesn't go into the ground, it goes into the storm drain and drains from there. It doesn't go into our groundwater." What he does down there does go into our groundwater. And that's, that's how we drink, we eat, uh, everything comes from our groundwater. Uh, and the noise has gotten ridiculous. Since this went to the planning commission and was denied. Since this went to the planning commission and was denied, they make it a point to come by and use their air brakes in front of the house. And if you ever had that happen in front of your house, you know what's happening, because your windows rattle. I was walking through the breezeway one day, and it was Victor that drove by, gave me the finger and the F-U, and that's not appreciated, that's not trying to get along. And it has nothing to do with race. We were attacked after the planning board meeting, and verbally attacked, and then we were threatened. It got so bad that somebody, one of the people working there at the planning commission came out, closed the doors, and settled it down before it got physical. They put us upstairs in a break room until they left, well, they never left, they waited at the front door. So they came back in and got us out of the break room, escorted us out the back door so that we wouldn't be attacked. I, I just don't think that's somebody that's trying to get along. It has, has nothing to do with race. It has to do with the noise, the pollution, it's residential. So that's all I have to say. If, have any questions from anybody?
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Lux.
All right, thank you.
Next up is Mr. De Leon, Angel, followed by Laura Duncan. If you want to work your way close, okay.
Hello, my name's Angel De Leon, I'm the son of Victor and Nider and Nida, I live on the same house with them, forty-four thirty-five North Ridge Road. I'd just like to say, as soon as we had the opportunity to have this property, me and my little brother, we're begging our parents, "Let's get this property, we love four-wheeling." We've always had that, and we lived in a neighborhood that HOA kind of didn't let us have fun with the, with our equipment, so we'd always just beg them to, to, to move. That's what would happen, that's what we've always done, we've always had four-wheelers, we have two competitive four-wheelers that are louder than our semis, and I drive them at night, literally like twelve at night, a while ago, back in high school, and they've never complained then. My little brother drives whenever he wants to, just to have fun, just because that's, that's something we've always had in us, we've always liked to do. I would like to mention about the drug, the truck noises, when he says that we jake brake, we understand that's loud, so we try not to use them in the neighborhood. We don't, and there's, I'll also like to mention, there's no, no jake brake signs in the area like Colwich, we see the jake brake signs all the time, obviously, yes, you're not supposed to use them for that reason. And then I, I'd like to also say about the trucks coming in and out all day, I just fail to understand when they say that they're in and out all day, like they act like we're a sand business, or that we're having, we're like mining material at my house and taking it somewhere else. That's just incorrect. Like Andy said the other day, something happens, truck breaks down, we, we remove the material, put it into another truck, and let's go, keep working. But if all our trucks are, if all of our four trucks are running, they're not going to be coming home, they're going to be working all day, if they're all running, they're going to be working. But they, really, for truck breakdowns and lunch breaks, which is more inconvenient to have a lunch at my house or at the yard, why would you drive back when you could stop at a gas station and have your lunch there and keep working? I'd also like to, to clarify about Ramona, the, the property northeast, right next to the ninety-six highway. She invited me last night to her house, me and my mom, we went to her house and talked about the situation. I'd just like to clarify that, she did say, end quote, that the neighbor said that these people they don't want in this neighborhood. I'd just like to mention that. Let's see, and I would like to say, there is multiple properties all across Ridge that has semis, and they all have the ability to work on their, their semis or, or other vehicles. That's something that we want to do too, like, we're trying to have a, a good understanding of what we have to do to do everything right. And I'd also like to mention about the water, so we don't power wash anymore, because we do understand that, we drink the water too, we shower there, we don't want to, that's our water too, you know, that's very understandable. So we don't, we stop power washing just because we want to understand what proper drainage system we need, so we could consume, or we start doing that again. But we did realize that. And a building is something that we've always talked about, because that would fix half the problems. The noise in the morning, that's going to be potentially, detrimentally reduced if they're inside a building. The diesel exhaust that Jim was saying, which smoke goes up, I don't really understand how it goes all the way down there in his building. And one, one also thing, I also like to, to say that we have two complaints filed with the sheriff's office with two of the neighbors, and that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? I don't see any. Thank you, sir. Next up is Laura, is it Duncan? And after that will be Erin Dyerah.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Laura Duncan, I live at fourteen forty North Park Place, not in this particular neighborhood, but we have a group of friends that define neighborhood a little bit differently, and who is our neighbor. I was contacted by some of my neighbors in that neighborhood, which I'm in the minority there, we have probably a seventy-five percent Latino community where I live. So she reached out to me saying that there was a family really struggling with their environment and situation in their neighborhood. So I did some checking in, and Erin Dina asked me if I would read the letter from Ramona Hayes, which was referenced in the presentation made earlier, but I'd like to read it in its entirety, it's not long. And, yes, Ramona Hayes, forty-three fifty-six North Ridge Road in Wichita. I'm in favor of Victor and Erin Diera De Leon getting their permit to have their residence own commercial parking located at forty-four thirty-five North Ridge Road, Wichita, Kansas. I have a truck business at forty-three hundred and forty-three fifty-six Ridge Road, just a few houses from the De Leons for fifty years, and not one of my neighbors have said a word about my trucks and the noise that they make. I talked to my neighbors about this zoning, and they tell me they don't want these people living in our neighborhood. I don't feel that way. Victor and his family have as much right to live in our neighborhood as we do. Victor keeps his property clean and are good people. So please, today, give this young couple a chance to make a living and live on our street in peace. Thank you, Ramona Hayes.
Any questions? I don't see any. So the next two names on our list was Victor and Andrew, but you've already addressed this and may have further dialogue. So next up is Erin Dyerah, followed by Victoria.
Hi, good morning. My name is Serendia Miranda, and I live on forty-four thirty-five North Ridge Road. I'm the owner of the house, and I come to say, well, my English is, I'm going to try to, I hope you understand, but we are playing in May, because I have a family right here, and you can see my sons, that I love you a lot, is why I'm working a lot for them. And I want to, to, I love it, and I do this for you guys, because I wanted the business for them to work. I, all the time, work with my, my neighbors, I know, I know this couple right here, I talk to sometimes, I never have any problem with them. They said we, we have noises, and we have parking the trucks. I talked to her, and I said, "What can I do? What can, what can I fix it? Do you both happy?" And she said, "Well, I don't want the trucks." I'm like, "We can move, and we can do something to, to be life and peace." But they don't want it, and I want to say, right here, the, the mister, they live across the street, I, I don't understand, I never know them before, her wife come and attack me, and he said, "We got pictures for them," and, and everything else, it's not true. They, they, the wife come to my property and pushed me and drive my phone, and they said they don't want, they don't want my family there. We're working a lot. The first day we moved, we cleaned, I show my, my child to clean, my angel, you can see him, he's already, he have license to driving, he's eighteen years old. I want to working hard, like his father. My, my son is right here, Victor, the little one, he's thirteen years old, he working, he have a chips, and he working in, in home, and he have, he all the time help us, because this is a business house, this is not, we don't want a big business, we want only work and family. My wife, my, I mean, my daughter, she married with Andy, and he also worked with us, we only family. And I want to tell you guys, we want only work, we don't want problems. I promise you guys, never want to see anymore the, the neighbors, and we have our house problems, we want to leave and pass, is, is it true? And I understand, they said they leave long time ago, and, and I understand too, but the city came already, it's not because us, it's already there. When we moved six years ago, it was nothing, now you can see everything, you can see houses, you can see apartment, you can see a lot of buildings.
Are you going to be able to wrap up, finish your comment, your time's up? Your, your time is?
Okay, so please.
Yes.
I want to say only, it came only to say, please give me the opportunity, my son can work. I said, thank you.
Any questions? I don't see any. Okay. Next up is Victoria. And after that is James Thompson.
I'm a little short, is that good? Okay. Hello, my name is Victoria Main De Leon, and I live at ninety-seven twenty-six Worth Smorodok, and the applicants are my parents. She mentioned the boys a lot, but she does have two daughters, just saying. But I came here just to share their story. I think there's always just more to it than they share. When I was little, I would ask my mom, "What was your dinner? What, what did you have to eat?" And she would tell me, "I had tortillas and water." She would tear up the tortillas and put them in water and made tortilla soup. She was very poor, so this is what they had to, to survive. And as she grew older, she knew she wanted to better herself and her family, so she came here to the United States. And in this journey, she met my father. I don't know why she picked him, but, I mean, I don't know. But after that, they came here to Wichita, another thing there, I don't know what happened, it's Wichita. I love Wichita, I'm giving you a hard time. When I was in high school, I graduated Mays High School, I would tell my friends, I'm like, "There's nothing here." And now that I'm older, I have a two-year-old daughter, I realize I love Wichita, I love being here in the community. I actually just volunteer with Humankind, they are making a new homeless shelter here in Wichita. And it's made, the parents I have made me be the person I am, and that includes being involved in the community. After I leave here, I work for a company called Spectrumware, and I'm going to go visit all our local clients and tell them thank you. Thank you for supporting a local business. And when I grew up, I went to Mays High School, went to Mays Middle School also, I used to drive down Ridge and Mays, I mean, that's the way to go to school. And the things there is up there now were not the things we, I had. The coolest thing I had was Taco Bell and Pizza Hut. Now there's a sandwich place, now there's Dairy Queen. Oh my gosh, I would have loved Dairy Queen. But my parents raised me to help the community and volunteer. They, the other day, me and my dad drove past the Amazon warehouse, and he looked at me so happy, like a little kid when you give a piece of candy, and he looked at me and he said, "I helped build that warehouse." And he is proud of helping the community, and all they want to do is keep helping the community. If you tell my parents, "Go build me a bridge," well, personally, we're not experts on building bridges, but you know what, we're going to give you a hundred percent, we're going to build that bridge as best as we can, and that is what we're here to do. You tell me you need to build a storage place, you know what, in the next couple of days, we're going to be building that. And I just want to thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. And next up is James Thompson. And after that would be Pat Driling.
My name is James Thompson, I live at forty-four nineteen North Ridge Road, two houses south of the property. I'm here this morning with my wife, Lorna. And I, I've been sitting back here, I'm going to keep this short, but I'm sitting back here listening to all this, and I hear the word, I hear, hear the, "We want to be part of the community, and we want to community collaborate." And we went to the October meeting, and I'm not going to go back over some of the things that they've already said, because I'm, I'm concurring with what they, my neighbors said. But after the meeting in October, and it's already been discussed a little bit, but right after the meeting, we were out, we came out of the meeting, and we were in the hallway, and they immediately came out of the meeting room and got in my wife's face, and were screaming at the top, screaming at the top of their voice, nose to nose, and in a very threatening manner. And we took it as a threat, our neighbor, my neighbors took it as a threat as we did. So after the meeting, we went home, and very, after the, after a little while, we got home, and they went out and they got their ATV, they've got one of those little ATVs with a, almost no muffler on it, or it's, it's a very loud, and they started running that ATV as loud as they could up and down the fence line that's between their property. And that went on almost till dark, as loud as they could, almost till dark. And I stood in my backyard and listened to this for an hour, thinking, "When are they going to, what's going on?" And this goes right back to the community collaboration, I kind of missed the point of community collaboration when they're harassing and, and doing in a harassing type manner. And then, so that went on late evening, and then the next day, it started over again, and they drove that ATV, and it was, the, the wind was out of the north, and I'm sitting, and he's doing, it sounds like he's doing donuts over there, and I'm seeing the dust fly up from this ATV, and I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking now, I must have missed the community collaboration part of all this. That's not what I'm witnessing. So, anyway, if you have any questions, I'll take them and I'll.
Okay, is there any questions? Mr. Hal, Commissioner Hal.
Thank you, Chairman. Curiously, when that was happening, did you contact the sheriff or anything like that?
The sheriff was contacted the day before, and he came out and was talking to the neighbor, and then shortly after the sheriff left, then the ATV noise. I did go down and talk to the zoning commission after that, and, and talk to them about what the possibility, or if we actually had a noise ordinance out there. And they told me there was, since we're out in the, in the rural, there is no zoning, or, we're not zoned for, are not zoned, but we're not, there is no noise, noise ordinance. But they said that it has been brought up, and they're talking about creating a noise ordinance for the rural areas, and I told, I told the zoning, I highly recommend that, I mean, because they're. I mean, because they're.
Let me make a quick comment and let me, let me clarify a couple of things here. I've been here a while and that topic has come up a few times. I don't think that's likely. I'll just tell you that from a commissioner perspective. I don't believe there's a county in, in the state of Kansas that has a sound ordinance in the unincorporated part of the county. If this is denied, the things you described can continue, no question. Because running four-wheelers, shooting guns, having bonfires even at midnight is not against the law. There's things that happen in the unincorporated parts of the county and other parts of the state that are considered behaviors that we might not, we may not like. But the things that you're describing today are, are not necessarily have anything to do with the zoning case. In fact, one of the conditions on the zoning case before us today is, one of the conditions that was discussed apparently, that was presented was, noise from the site should not be audible from the adjacent or surrounding property above the local ambient noise. So if this was to pass, the activity that relates to the trucks would have to be limited in terms of its, the noise emitted because of that activity. But with regards to four-wheelers and other things that they do, that, that has absolutely nothing to do with this case. And I appreciate, you know, this is Christmas time. I want neighbors to be neighborly and to love each other and to get along. We all want that. But neighbors have disputes and they, unincorporated, it happens all the time. If I had, uh, um, some type of, uh, way, way to keep track of this, I would say the dozens of times, if not more than that, have I had neighbors that are in dispute with each other. And sometimes it comes to this type of behavior. I'm not doubting what you say. I believe that what you're saying is very sincere and probably very true. But it's not against the law. It's not a crime. It's simply bad behavior if that's what's happening. And, and this has, again, I'm sorry that that type of thing, that neighbors treat each other that way. If that's, if that's happening, I, I, I feel for you. But it has absolutely nothing to do with this case. And in terms of a sound ordinance being contemplated by the county, I am not aware of that. I would say it's unlikely. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other question? Oh, go ahead. You can respond, sir.
I'd just like to.
Yeah.
Make a comment after that. We don't, we don't want them to go out of business. We just wish that they would, we want them to continue in business. We just, and they say they have four trucks over there, but they've actually, most of the time they had five, or they've had at times up to five big trucks over there. Uh, we just want them to move that business to where it's already been set up by the county to run a business like that. And we'd like to have our neighborhood back to where, you know, it's, it's, uh, back to family living and that type of thing is why we moved out there to begin with. And I was just, I was just, they came up and made comments and I was just refuting what they were saying about how neighborly and friendly and all that kind of things that they said they weren't, they weren't.
Okay. All right. I don't see other, no other questions? Thank you. Uh, next up is Pat Driling. Followed by Jason Geetson. And last would be Aracel Amandar.
Hi, Pat Driling, four seven seven eight Port West. Uh, I'm not a neighbor to Victor and Andrea, but have known them since they came to town, uh, early, uh, late, late nineties, early two thousands. Very, very hardworking, uh, family, um, uh, from the time that they started their restaurants from scratch. Uh, always, always working at these restaurants, um, and, and the houses that they built. Um, just every time I'm, I'm around them and seeing they're, they're, uh, hardworking folks, um, I, I think, um, whatever decision that you can make, um, let them know the parameters that they need to, need to abide by and, and I believe that they're going to do it. Um, they, they, I can't, can't reiterate how hardworking of a fam- family that they are. So, um, um, I, I hope you, uh, vote in their behalf.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Don't see any. Jason Geetson.
I believe he did.
Oh, he did? Okay. And then, uh, last is Aracel Amander. Apologize for the pronunciation.
My name is Araceli Amador and I don't live in the neighborhood, but I'm friend of, uh, Andrea and her family. I know them since ten years ago. They are hard worker entrepreneurs. And when I say that they are hard worker entrepreneurs, I mean it. Um, they have, uh, had a restaurant and I met them right there. So, um, she reached to me because she and her family has been arranged by her neighbors, by their neighbors, and in a way that I think is not acceptable at all. Because I'm a community animator and through the neighboring movement, I learned that as neighbors, we can learn and be good neighbors through connection and trying to solve the matters in the best way possible, respecting each other. I choose going to advocate for her cause because I think, um, being an entrepreneur is not easy. It's a difficult journey. And I think if they are asking for something, I know that they are going to do the best for their neighbors and for their own business and the community. That's it. Thank you so much for listening.
Okay. Yes. Any questions? I don't see any. Okay, with that, uh, that's the end of the, uh, public comment. So we will bring the discussion back to the bench. A lot has been said and stated. Any questions? I have a general one if, uh, maybe to, to clarify. Uh, this would be for Philip and, uh, I got, I got two questions. I think in our, in our debrief, um, talked about, um, some, I know the zoning, I guess not in compliance, but there was maybe some code enforcement that was brought to code enforcement attention and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but when it was addressed, was then the, the applicant compliant with code enforcement?
I will defer to Kelly Dixon with county code enforcement to speak about the activities and the actions taken.
Okay. Just remind me. That discussion.
There's Kelly Dixon, Metropolitan Area Building. Um, yes, once the enforcement action, once the letter goes out, um, they did comply by contacting Metropolitan Planning to see what processes they needed to go through to become legal. At that time, we stopped enforcement activities so that they can go through the process. That has been, uh, the method of operation for, since I've been doing this.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly. That was my question. My other one would be, um, been, been in a lot of zoning cases, but this was a little, little different for me. I, I go back to this letter that they, that they mailed to you or as part of our packet. Is it, and it's up to the commission, but is it possible that, that this letter could be included as part of the, uh, of the protective overlay? Since they state they're going to do a lot of things.
I will take a stab at that and I'll lean on legal to correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
But my understanding is, um, details that were part of that letter, like hours of operation, uh, other matters regarding location, um, number of vehicles, things like that, all are within the purview of adding to a protective overlay to, for, as enforceable items, um, for future, if the zoning were to go through, you can add details from that. I'm not sure about adding the letter per se, but identifying specific details from the letter that you would consider to be added language to the protective overlay. Many of those items and the details that are provided there could be added. Um, and we would give further guidance depending on what items you're specifically looking at.
Well, I'm not, uh, I'm not abreast to take the protective overlay and compare and somebody like Commissioner Howell can do that for us, but, uh, anyway, go ahead.
Yes, Chairman. Justin Wagner, I did want to make a comment quickly and, and just say that, um, if that is something that any of the commissioners are interested in doing an inquiry, it might be best to ask the applicant on the record if they, um, would agree to those items. As I believe that was submitted to planning staff a while back before it went to the planning commission meeting the second time, so it might be good to, if, if that's something that commissioners have in mind to confirm that they are willing to commit to those items.
Okay. Well, I wasn't speaking on behalf of the whole commission, I just, from my own background and knowledge. So, okay. See if we have any other questions, comments? Commissioner Howell.
So, thank you. And, and Philip, my question is that property across the street that's, has the trucking operation. I see that's zoned currently as a conditional use residential property. Is that correct?
Uh, if I can find our presentation real quick, give me one second here.
That's the one.
This one?
That property right there.
Let me get to the zoning map real quick. So that property is, uh, in, is limited commercial zone with a community unit plan. So it's not a conditional use, it's a community unit plan, which is a governing document over top of a large commercially zoned property at minimum six acres in size, um, which has different types of regulations to either restrict uses. The community unit plan was not put in place to allow the trucking. The community unit plan is relatively recent. I don't have the date off the top of my head of when that came through, but it was tied to, at one point, this entire property was part of the community unit plan and that was established not too long ago, uh, being a three oh one number. Um, and then the PUD for the duplexes was split off, uh, at a later date. But the community unit plan was not there to establish the trucking business. My understanding, it was zoned to limited commercial from SF twenty. Added the community unit plan as part of the process for possible future commercial development. So the trucking business preceded the commercial zoning with the community unit plan. That was done at a later date with the oper- giving the opportunity for redevelopment for commercial uses in the future within the limited commercial district governed by the community unit plan.
So I interpret that, I interpret that same, when the county adopted zoning, county-wide zoning, was it nineteen eighty-five, I think, or so?
Something like that.
Uh, this, this trucking operation may have been, may have been happening at that time. So it basically grandfathered them in.
Possibly, yes.
There was no community debate necessarily. Okay. But there's still residents there as well.
That is my understanding. The aerial doesn't go as far down, but I believe there's still, let's go back to the Um, this just shows, uh, more of the commercial building. Um, I'm not fully aware whether or not there's a residence, but I think there might be a residence nearby.
Are they allowed to do storage there, work on vehicles there, as many trucks as they want? Is there any type of limit on that property?
I might defer to legal. I know they can do the vehicle repair. I don't have the governing language of the community unit plan in front of me, but limited commercial typically allows vehicle repair and other types of commercial uses. There's probably a, a little bit of a fine line of possibly things that were grandfathered in if those uses had not ceased, um, versus what they can do now.
So back to the subject property today, um, forty-four thirty-five. You mentioned earlier that they're allowed to have one semi-truck there. It's a, it's like owned by a family member that's parked overnight.
Yes.
But not two? Not three?
Not two. Um, for the use of parking or storage related to like a trucking business, they can have one. Uh, if they were to do vehicle repair where the business was to repair vehicles and people bring their vehicles to this site for repair, they could have more, but that would be for the business of repairing them, knowing that truck is on site for a short time and then it's off. For a trucking business or just to park or store a truck, um, one commercial vehicle is allowed. Uh, vehicles under twenty-six thousand gross vehicle weight rating, there's no limit.
So I don't know if this is allowed or not, but I, I have a, uh, property thirty twenty five East Seventy-Nine Street South that's almost exactly what you just described. There are family members and I think others that bring their vehicles in at night and primarily over the weekend. They are not there, as far as I know, for, uh, maintenance work in terms of, that's not the nature of their business. The nature of the business is trucking, but they do take care of those vehicles, um, while they're there. They wash them, they probably change the oil and things like that. And that's been allowed under the home-based, uh, guidelines of rural residential. I think, it's zoned rural residential. And they have six, eight, ten trucks there almost every weekend. And they have, uh, put up screening on the front of the property, but they have a very wide gate, I would say around twenty-five feet wide where the trucks go in and out. But the, the screening is a probably eight to ten feet tall, uh, wall, uh, fence that shields most of the property and there's also some trees. So you can't see a lot of that unless you're really looking for it. Um, but what I'm finding troubling here is the inconsistency of that property versus the one we're talking about today. With that, what I understand from previous discussion, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if they were to do very similar things, bring in four or five trucks over the weekend and change the oil and wash the windows, kick the tires, is that not maintenance? Is that not allowed? Will they charge money for that or not? Uh, charging money for that is not.
Right.
It is a maintenance function.
Correct.
And they would have a right to do that. If they say, well, the vehicle's there for five or six days and they didn't get to it for five or six days, it's waiting for me to kick the tires, that would not be, would that still, still be allowed under the home maintenance, uh, home occupation law?
Vehicle repair, um, for any number of vehicles is allowed by right with a home occupation.
I, I'm, I'm reading some of the minutes from the MAPC. It sounds like they struggle with this as well.
I would agree.
I, I'm having a trouble understanding the fine line between these two ideas. So, actually, let me just say this. I, I find it's interesting that we're actually having to go to a GC zoning when there is a residence and they, they tend to live there. This ought to be, my, it seems like it should be a conditional use anyway, um, if we're going to have some type of control. But it sounds like even under rural residential or SF twenty and the unincorporated, they would have a right to do essentially what this other property is doing already.
If the primary focus of the business was vehicle repair. My understanding that the primary focus of this business is the trucking aspect, they go on and off the site to complete orders. The trucks are parked overnight, they have the right to maintain these vehicles there, but it's the fine line of was, what is the primary focus of the business? Their primary function of their business is not repairing individuals, member, people's trucks or not having other individuals bringing their trucks on site to fix. These are their fleet and they are parking them overnight for a trucking business. So it is a fine line.
And I understand what you just said. I would say that what you just described, this other property is not there, they're not being maintained as, as the primary business. There, it's a trucking place to store vehicles over the weekend while these people are doing other things at home. They come in on the weekend, they, someone takes care of the trucks, they do some minor maintenance, they, after where they go. But I don't think the maintenance is the primary reason why they're there. They have a place to store the vehicles for the, when they're back home between trips out, out on the road or whatever. So, again, I'm having a hard time understanding why we interpret these things differently. I, I'm struggling with that. I, I, I believe that, uh, the nature of this business, again, a lot of the complaints we heard today deal with neighbor issues. Okay? Whether or not someone said we don't want them here or not, that's pretty disturbing, but that doesn't really apply here. It's not part of the zoning case. Uh, making noise with four-wheelers is not part of the zoning case. Uh, the only thing, this part of the zoning case is whether they have the right to bring in these four or five vehicles or six vehicles, however many it is, and store them overnight and store them over the weekend. By the way, one of the, based on that letter that Chairman is talking about, says days of operation, Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM and Saturday, six AM to two PM. That might be when the vehicles come and go. But I understand from the last time they were here, they planned on storing these vehicles there on Sunday and start their proper operation back up again on Monday morning. So this does not really encompass, if you will, when the vehicles are going to be there. There's, there, this, this is maybe when they start the vehicles and drive them off the property and come back and shut them down before that, those hours. But the trucks are going to be there.
Correct.
Outside these hours. And so I think there's misunderstanding exactly what this means. I, I, I'll sit there and listen to the rest of the comments here today, but I'm, I'm struggling for a lot of reasons here. I, uh, I, I, I'll, let me listen to the rest of the conversation. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of comments. There might be a question in here, I'm, I'm not sure, but I, I do want to acknowledge that I, I believe that this family is a hardworking family and all the things that were said. I, as a, as an entrepreneur and a small business owner, I, I sincerely admire that. I'm struggling with the, the consistency piece of this. And in my view, you know, this is currently zoned SF twenty and we have a mechanism to allow for home occupancy businesses. And that mechanism for home occup- is limited so that the enjoyment of SF twenty for the neighborhood and for the adjacent properties, they can continue to enjoy SF twenty zoning. That's the inconsistency piece is we have a home occupancy mechanism that's limited on purpose. Um, and I, and I believe that we also have a duty, not just to, to stretch the limit the best we can to empower home occupancy businesses, my purview only. But I believe we need to protect and honor the expected usage and the expected rights in SF twenty. I think residents deserve consistency and residents deserve protections. I understand what the protective overlay is trying to accomplish. But this inconsistency of moving this to GC with protective overlay is, I'm, I'm having a really hard time with it because people that buy and live in SF twenty deserve consistency. And if we take in the middle of patchwork and put GC in the middle of, of adjacent properties that are SF twenty, I, I'm just not comfortable with that in, in many regards. I appreciate the, I appreciate the protective overlay. Could you clarify days and hours in this protective overlay? I, I know the screening is there. Could you clarify the other uses that they'd be able to do outside of commercial parking? I think I know from the maintenance piece of it, but the noise. I think I know from the maintenance piece of it, but the noise, although there's no noise ordinance, again, we have SF-20 all around this. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. The protective overlay clarifies the uses of those permitted by ride in SF-20 in addition to the one commercial use of being commercial parking area. So it's not opening the door wide open to everything else in general commercial, it's allowing the one use and then all current uses within SF-20. The letter clarified their typical hours of operation, the protective overlay does not have that language in there right now. The protective overlay does not have necessarily days of operation of when the vehicles can and cannot come off the property. Those, both of those items could be under consideration if you were to want to add those to that language. Any type of commercial zoning automatically kicks in the requirement for screening. That doesn't have to be in a protective overlay, that's just natural as well as the all-weather surface paving requirement. I know it's weird to say paved when it's gravel, but it's, it's not dirt or grass. Did I answer all of your?
You did, yeah. I, I didn't see in the protective overlay anything for days and hours.
No, they're not in there right now.
I didn't see anything in that, so. Okay, I, I just, I'm, I'm struggling with the, I want consistency in SF-20.
Understand.
And, and that's a challenge because those that live in adjacent properties deserve consistency for SF-20 zoning, so. I'll see if anybody else has anything else to say. Thanks.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And I've listened with interest to both sides of this. And I do agree with Commissioner Beatty that if we're putting some kind of a commercial facility in the middle of a residential area, that causes me some pause. I've read through the protective overlay 412 or whatever you've got, and it doesn't protect the neighbors. That's my biggest concern. If we move forward with this and there is, would be adopted, in addition to the protective overlay that the planning department has come up with, I think everything that's in the letter that the applicant has put forth would need to be included in that. In addition, remember that anything we do goes with this property from this point forward, even if they sell it, it still goes with the property. So we don't know what's going to happen in the future either. So as a result, we've got to protect the neighbors also from anything else that can happen. So besides the protective overlay, besides the letter, it doesn't address things like the environmental issues to make sure that we're not washing out trucks and possibly polluting the groundwater. It's not including lighting. It does include noise, which is one of the good things that I saw in that. It doesn't prohibit maintenance, and I don't know if there's anything that prohibits maintenance on these vehicles, because you could have some major maintenance on these, which I think would also be something that would be adverse to the neighbors. So I'm struggling with this because I want to protect the neighbors, but I'd like to see the, the applicants be successful also. And without additional restrictions, I can't vote, I couldn't adopt this with the protective overlay in place. I can't just deny it, I don't think. The third option we have is with modifications, but the modifications that I would need in there are fairly extensive and I don't know that I can write them all today to make sure that we are protecting the neighbors. Because I've mentioned several things in addition to the letter that the applicant has put in that I would need to have in there. So again, I'm struggling, but I want to make sure that I protect the neighbors also. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Lopez.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Chairman?
No, it's, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'm going to, but.
Okay.
I saw your light was on.
Okay, thank you. Well, this, this is an interesting case. I mean, it's obviously very emotional and our job is to not take hearsay into consideration because what we're doing is, is really talking about the facts of this case. We've heard some complaints and I, I do think that we could get to, I think the protective overlay could address those complaints where people would be more comfortable. I think the hours of operation is a great example if we could add that because it's in the letter that, that the applicant wrote. I think it's a very easy thing that we can put into that. I, I just struggle because there's so much additional noise with this that it is going to be hard to make sure that even after this is done, whatever we do, like people, we still have to be neighbors with each other. And I think that's kind of being lost in this is there's a lot of he said, she said type things. When, when this comes down to, it's, it's a zoning case and so we need to make sure that we're addressing it as such. I, I struggle with the character of neighborhood argument when across the street there has been a trucking company. So I, I don't see how this significantly changes the character of the neighborhood when that has been there in the past. And, and it is, it's not like it's miles away, it's just, it's across the street. So I think we could look at the protective overlay, maybe add some things that we would want to see in that, but that's where I'm at today.
Okay. Question for the applicant, Victor, or Andrew, which one? So I'm leaning, I mean, there's been a lot of stuff here. So if the details in the letter that could be included in addition to the protective overlay of, protective overlay number 412, is that something that you guys can, you object to that or you are?
No objections there. And I mean, since the beginning, we're here to get it approved, so.
Okay.
Let's see what we can do to get it in there and whatever you need from us.
All right. Now to wordsmith this, I'm going to make a motion. It's, if you're following along, it'd be option number two. It's why to approve the zone change, but I move that the board approves the zone change from rural residential to GC general commercial to permit commercial parking with protective overlay number 412 as presented by the Metropolitan Area Planning Department on November 9th of '23 with the following modifications. Asking, the modifications is for the planning commission to take the existing overlay 412, compare it to the letter and add anything that's in the letter to protective 412. And the reason the motion is being made basically due to the fact that the zoning and uses of properties that are, that are nearby. That's kind of a long, a long motion, that's about as long as I've ever had. So that's the motion.
Chairman.
Understood? Okay. Comments or questions? Yeah.
Just want to ask, does the, does the applicant agree with that, with that action? Does he agree with 412 plus the letter?
Yes, we do.
I'm sorry, I mean, can we interrupt you?
That's all right.
Okay.
And Commissioner Dennis has a question or comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate your motion, but I don't think it goes quite far enough. I mentioned a couple of other areas that I am concerned about in addition to that, and that would be lighting that might go off the property that could affect the neighbors. How do we protect them, the neighbors against any kind of pollution that would cause from the runoff and so forth if there's rushing vehicles? And also prohibit any kind of major maintenance on those vehicles because that would be disruptive to the neighbors if, if you started having major maintenance on those. So I, I appreciate where you're going, I don't think you went far enough. At least you didn't go far enough for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Al.
Chairman, I, I understand Commissioner Dennis's comments. I was wondering if, if we were to address some of that, I know this sounds like making sausage from the bench, which we tend to avoid, but one of the things that, things was mentioned, if they did maintenance, it'd be nice if they have that on a hard surface so they could collect any, any toxic chemicals that might be likely to soak into the gravel or, or the dirt. So again, I think a hard surface for any maintenance that is done on the property would be something I'd be interested in. I think this issue of operations needs to be clear that, that vehicle storage outside those hours would be, would be allowed, but operating the vehicles within those hours would be what we're talking about with those hours of operations, because I think it's not clear. I'm not personally too concerned about the lighting in this case, but I do, I would be willing to agree with Commissioner Dennis. If they added that, I'd be fine with that. With those comments, I think if, if we could, if we could add those comments, again, trucks in operation will be limited to seven trucks. Says five to seven, I think you have to be clear with a number. Is there, is there a way for us to, to put a sunset or time limit on this so that if there's not compliance, that there is a way to review this in the future? It's a question for Kirk.
Commissioner Kirk Spence, again, Deputy County Counselor. We see those sunsets in terms of the conditional use applications, but because this is a zoning change, we don't impose limitations like that.
So if there's non-compliance, this ends up as a civil issue?
If there is non-compliance with the requirements, if it were approved today, there would potentially be, I, I wouldn't, I'm not going to speculate on potential civil actions that is potentially possible, but there is always the, the fallback that we could pursue potential charges through county court for violation of the UCC.
They could cite them with county, county code violations.
Code enforcement.
Okay.
I would think.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Kirk, I think your answer is code enforcement would step in. Is it correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Commissioner Dennis, I don't know if you want to try this or if you want me to try it, but if, if you wanted to, to make a substitute motion with those conditions, I would probably second that.
And, and if I may, I could always offer up potential language for the board for consideration as well, based off of kind of what I've heard today.
Is there a way for us to, to come back later in this meeting with that recommendation and maybe deal with it today? Or is that something we have to do outside this meeting?
So procedurally, there are a few options here. Obviously, we're dealing with multiple moving parts. So first and foremost, we can always decide today. You would have the opportunity to defer this item for a set number of time in, in terms of weeks in order for us to wordsmith this and get back, compare language to you. As an alternative, if you wanted, if you want to defer the item to later in this agenda, you could do that as well, in which case I could also bring language to you now at that time, or I could work, or I could present language to you now, which tries to incorporate some of the language, which I could probably do with an extra minute of time or two.
Yeah. I would rather get this over with personally, so I don't know if there's a way for us to, if you need more time, I, I would like to either come back to it in a little bit or, or do it as we sit.
Then if that were your preference, I would recommend that you make a motion to defer the item to either after a set agenda item or until the end of the meeting itself, but that would go after.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you're, you're not requiring a whole lot of time. I know this is unusual and I apologize for the unusual aspect of this. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we would defer this item to later in the agenda to come back with recommendations for code, for, for this predictive overlay, language to be considered by the board after item I is completed.
Second. Motion and a second to move this item to after I. Any other comments? I'll make a comment to the public that I don't think the rest of the agenda between now and I will take that long. I'm hoping. We'll see. I'm getting the fish eye. So okay, anyway, okay, there's a motion and a second, we'll see how it works out. Motion and a second. Madam Kirk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Before the next item, it is 11 o'clock, we've been two hours, can we take a 10-minute break? And we'll be right back. Okay. Be back at 11:12.
They respond first there anyway because they're the closest fire station. So this actually makes a tremendous amount of sense for lots of reasons. I make a motion, we would take the, I assume there's a recommended action to approve the annexation.
Actually, Commissioner, it was a neutrally worded recommended action. So I'd suggest that, I think you're looking at option one, I believe.
Yeah, so with that, I would make a motion, we would, yes?
You have, hold on, we got, we got the wording.
Okay. There's wording, okay, there it is. Thank you so much. Always appreciate extra words here. I would make a motion that we, the board makes a finding that the annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area, or that of any other incorporated, incorporated city located in Sedgwick County.
Second, just a motion and a second, any other questions? Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item G, adoption of the 2024 legislative platform.
Okay, good morning, Tanya.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Adopted every year by the county commission, the Sedgwick County Legislative Platform is the foundation of a focused strategy and serves as a reference guide for legislative and policy positions and objectives. This year, we focus our efforts on appropriations and policy issues of public service, public safety, workforce, and easing property taxes that are important to Sedgwick County and to continue to maintain the high level of services and programs. Our legislative platform is provided to all members of the Kansas Legislature, House and Senate through our lobbyist firm, Watkins Public Strategies, Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas, who assist us with laying out these state issues intended for specific legislative action and working with the South Central delegation. We've discussed this platform on several occasions through our staff meeting, and we did that yesterday as well. I will tell you, there are 23 items on our legislative platform. I'm happy to discuss each of those individually. I will tell you that COMCARE is on our legislative platform, our community development disability organization. We have corrections, both adult and juvenile, Health Department, we have Division of Finance, we have DUI on there, we have Human Resources, Metropolitan Area Building Construction Department, Metropolitan Area Planning Department, we have Property Tax, Public Works, Suspended Driver's License Law, and we also have the Zoo on there for our legislative platform. So you did receive the red line version and the clean version, you should have a copy of that before you. So again, I'm happy to go through each item if you would like me to, but I recommend adoption of the legislative platform.
Okay, Tanya, let's see if any comments right now. Thank you for the red line version, that's very helpful. I like all of this stuff. I see we added the sanitary inspections, we removed some stuff. The only thing I, that I thought we discussed yesterday was rewording the Public Works words.
So I sent that out, and then I did receive notification that we needed to reduce the wording on that, so I will get with Lynn Packer and make sure we get that condensed, and I apologize for that.
Okay, do we want to approve this with knowing that the Public Works is going to downsize their request? But first of all.
Yeah, well Chairman, I agree with the changes that have been made, and I think this is a pretty good document. I would like to see that Public Works piece reduced. I would trust the staff to do that. I don't feel like I need to see that before I would put my, my support behind this. I would just comment on the Juvenile Corrections section, there's a number of items, I did reach out to Representative Stephen Owen, who chairs the Juvenile Justice Committee, it's a state legislature, and he was not able to provide any feedback yet. He's unavailable generally between now and through Christmas Day, but he said he would get back with me between Christmas and New Year's. I, I think that our number one priority at this point is to get a, is to get something out of this board that may be subject to minor changes. Even in January, once the state, I'm sorry, once the city of Wichita gets their new council seated, I know they're going, they're going to be taking up some of this as well. I would like to know if it would be reasonable for us to make a, a motion today to approve it in a draft form, do a minimal printing of this, so we can hand it out to our legislators as we have opportunity, opportunity between now and when the session begins, knowing that we might make some changes to the document in January. At that point, we'd adopt it without a draft, without draft term on it, and go to print for real, and get those cards out to the legislators when we go up and to tweak it to lobby for our platform. So I'd like to see us approve it in a draft form today, to, so we can print it out essentially with a draft comment on it, so we can, we can work with our legislators between now and, when the session begins in January. Would that be reasonable, Chairman?
Yeah.
I would make that motion then. I'd make that motion to draft, to, to approve it in draft form and do a minimal printing of this for us to use between now and when the session begins.
And if I can, I might just make a comment. I did reach out to Jason and Jessica yesterday and sent the platform that you talked about yesterday, and asked them to get with Representative Owens as well as Representative Carpenter on the CDO items and the corrections items.
I will second that. Let's comment, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Tanya and all the staff that worked on this, thank you. Every year, we spend a lot of time and effort making sure that we get our legislative platform for the state in, in as good a shape as we can that's going to support the county. And we have had tremendous success in the past years because of this, when we go up there, and our lobbyists do a fantastic job to help us get to this point. I don't have a problem with approving this in a draft form, because I do agree that we need to look at Public Works and see if we can pare that down just a little bit so that it is a little clearer and a little shorter, so that people will read it. The main thing is that if we do have a draft, remember that on January 3rd, we do have kind of a meeting, it's different than it's been in the past. REAP always set up a meeting for us with our legislators going into it, into the session. We're not going to have the opportunity to go in front of the legislators as we've had in the past, but we need to have something on January 3rd that we can carry with us so that we can provide it to the legislators. So if we have a draft, we're not going to have another meeting between now and, well, we will with that morning, won't we?
I think it's on January 4th.
Is it the 4th? Okay.
Right, so we'll have a day.
Yeah, so, so we may be able, but you'd be printing something awful fast, and I don't want to rush into it to make sure that it's done right. In addition, we're going to have a luncheon with a lot of the legislators with the Foreign Bureau coming up, the first part of January, so having these in our possession is going to be important. So we do need to move forward. I don't have a problem with approving it as a draft today, but there's a lot of things that are going to be happening before that they go into the session, that we need to make sure that we have something with us. So again, thanks for everything that you all did to get us to this point, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I don't have a problem necessarily with adopting this in draft form, I just want to make sure that you don't think that that would water down, if we're giving something to a legislator and say, this is what our platform is, but there could be potential changes, does that make it less effective? I guess that's my only concern, is just thinking about that aspect. And if, if that's not a concern, then I'm perfectly fine with this.
I see the manager reaching for his mic.
You know, is the idea then, on January 3rd, at our next meeting then, to ratify, or will we need pass that, do you think?
Formally.
Because I think if we, I think if the commission ratifies this and takes the draft away on January 3rd, I think we're okay.
But if, if we're waiting until after the new city council comes, and that's even past that, and that's my concern.
Yeah, and just to clarify the date, is this, is the REAP event on, that's on the 4th of January, the day after, so we could, then the question becomes, can we push this back to the, to the 10th?
Fourth.
I don't know. Why don't you let me check with Jason and Jessica on that?
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. That was my exact recommendation, was why don't we make sure that Jason and Jessica are on the same page? And I have a hunch they probably will be, I'm, I'm not concerned about it, I would approve the draft form today. I want to thank you for all your work you and your staff did, it's considerable work. I'd also note that some of the big traction items that we've got in progress on with the legislature, obviously this agenda is going to be very important, but bringing them here, having these roundtable discussions like we did with homelessness, and we've done it on foster care, we've done it on other items, we've had Stephen here, Representative Owens here in meetings, I think that we need to be very proactive in continually reaching out and bridging those gaps in communication and bringing these people to the building whenever we can to have these roundtables. I think that's the most effective way to get not just their backing of our initiatives, but also continue the relationship and move progress forward. So very much in support of the legislative agenda, and I think that we can continue to do more to build that relationship and, and lobby for the things we need here in this community.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. To the previous question, I would just say this, that the, the oath of office for the city council members is on the 8th, which is a Monday in January. The legislative representatives and senators will not be in Topeka to do any business until the 8th. Again, this is a, the beginning of the 2024 session is on the 8th of January. The 9th is the first city council meeting, I would expect that anything that they would do to their platform, a discussion that they would probably have, and give the new council a chance to adopt, if you will, the platform and have a discussion between us and them to see if we, we can agree on some things, that would happen on the 9th. Wednesday, the 10th is our, is our first meeting, I should say, our second meeting in January, but it's our first meeting after the city council's been seated. And I would just tell you, that first week in the legislative session, there's not a lot going on in terms of any significant bill activity, generally, unless there's something that's, every once in a while, there's a bill that does that, but the normal process is you're not going to deal with any significant legislation, there's no committee meetings that first week, for example, they're just really getting back to, back to work. And so I, I think for us to adopt this officially on the 10th makes a lot of sense. If you go to print, we would have it available to hand out probably a day or two after that, I would expect. The following week would be the 15th of, of January, that is not too early to have this printed. I should say, it's not a bad date to have this printed available for everyone to hand out to our friends in Topeka. So I would suggest we take this up officially on the 10th of January.
Good. Commissioner Dennis.
I disagree, because we're going to meet with the legislators at least two times on the 4th, and then with the Foreign Bureau. And we need something with us at the time that we meet with them that's official. And I don't see that anything that the city of Wichita is going to do is going to impact our legislative agenda, it hasn't in the seven years I've been here. And if something that critical comes up, we can always go ahead and support it. Remember, we still got the REAP, the joint platform that's coming up for us in the future, that's the one that we'll be adopting that can be later on. So this is our legislative agenda, it's not the city of Wichita's legislative agenda. I strongly suggest we approve this on the 3rd, so we have an actual legislative platform when we start meeting with the legislators. Thank you.
Okay.
I concede Chairman to Commissioner Dennis' comments.
The, but the motion, according to, with the clerk, is that we approve this in its draft format, we hadn't put a date of official endorsing unless you want to add.
Chairman, may I amend my motion to say we will come back and, hopefully to adopt this, reconsider adopting this officially on, on January the 3rd at our meeting in January.
I'll second that. All right, any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Says aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
I say aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for all the work on that. Next item, please.
Item H, reconsideration of item five of the minutes of the November 8th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Government Relations and Consulting Services, various departments.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. As was mentioned, this item was originally presented to you on November 15th. You requested it be deferred to this meeting today, and so we are bringing it back for your approval. I'll read the recommendation as originally stated, this is for the Government Relations Consulting Services of various departments, and the recommendation is to establish contract pricing with Thorn Run Partners LLC, and is effective January 1st, 2024, and will run through December 31st, 2025. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I, again, recommend approval.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Well, Joe, you know I've got questions. How many lobbyists are in Washington DC that support local governments?
Probably a lot, I would say. I don't have that answer, sir.
I know it's an unfair question, but there are a ton of them.
Yes.
Well, let me ask you the second question that you won't be able to answer, but what is the cost of all of those others for providing the services?
Another good question, which I don't have that.
So we don't know the answer to that either. So what we're doing is we're going out on a sole source, and we don't know what else is out there. And I have strong aversion to sole source contracts unless there's a compelling need for a sole source contract. We haven't gone out and bid this, we don't know what the cost of others, lobbyists will be. In addition, the lobbyist that you're suggesting that we approve has had a track record of not accomplishing anything in our legislative agenda year after year. What's the number one thing on our federal legislative agenda is the Northwest Expressway. No federal funding, even though that there is billions of dollars coming out of the Biden administration for things like that. What's another one? It's just to help us with the flooding that we've got in West Wichita. So far, nothing has happened on that, we've applied for it a couple times, and we haven't received any funding whatsoever, even though that there's billions of dollars coming out of the federal government. Another one we asked for was an emergency management facility. We even went out and purchased property to build it on, and we've been, no money whatsoever coming out of the federal government to help us with that. So I don't understand why anyone can justify going sole source when we don't know the cost. In addition, it's the same contractor that the city of Wichita has, so what's the total cost for a year for this?
For this one, it's $6,500 per month, which I think comes out to about $78,000.
Okay, so, so the, the citizens that reside in the city of Wichita are paying $78,000 to this company, and we're paying $78,000, so the taxpayers in the side of the city of Wichita are actually paying twice for a service that we have not gotten anything out of at this point. So my preference is if we even need a, a federal lobbyist, we didn't have one for years and years, this is something new, if we need it, and I'm not saying if we need it or not, because we haven't come to that point to decide if we need it, but if we need it, why are we not going out doing the same thing we do with every other contract? And that is opening it up to the bids so that we can find out how many people would be interested in it and what the cost is. And we don't know either one of those questions, and yet you're asking us to approve this sole source today. So I cannot vote for it. I, I think that this is a strong, serious mistake, not going forward with bidding out a contract, so thank you.
Commissioner Kirk Sponzel, Deputy County Counselor, I just want to step in real quick, just so everyone's on the same page, because the, the reasoning was emphasized multiple times as sole source, my understanding based off of the, based off of, sorry?
Kirk, I don't, I don't care if it's called sole source or anything else, it's one bid, so you're, you're mixing semantics. The thing is, why are we going for one? And that's the point. Thank you.
Okay, well, I could go into a robust discussion about this, but I respect your total dismay with this person and this company and everything about it, so I'm going to make, I, I've got a lot of reason to support this, and the most recent was yesterday, we got a memo from this company showing the 26 grant opportunities that we could consider in various amounts of, of departments that, that we didn't, we've never had that before. If we had to do that on our own, we, we don't have the staff or the knowledge to deal with the departments. So this, I, this company's helped our whole community with, with the landing of the recent news on Amtrak, so the statement that absolutely nothing has happened is just not a, it's not professional and it's, it's not accurate. And we can go into a private discussion about a lot of that if you'd like to, Commissioner Dennis. But with that, I, I'm going to make a motion that we approve item number five on the board and bids.
I'll second.
Just a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments would be a little bit different than Commissioner Dennis', but again, I don't know how many years we do not have a federal lobbyist, this is, this is a fairly new thing for us. It has been, we've had this for four or five years, I guess, at this point, but we have not had one before that that I'm aware of. With that in mind, I, I don't know how many clients our lobbyist has, how many, how much time he spends on our behalf, engaging with people who are not our federally, our delegation. We don't have a good relationship necessarily with people outside our delegation, but we have a great relationship with our delegation. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Representative Estes, Congressman Estes, Senator Marshall, Senator Moran have been very receptive to our desires and needs here, they listen to us, we can call them on the phone, they'll answer the phone, they'll call us back, they'll visit with us, we have a great, great relationship with those folks, and that, I know they do also lobby on our behalf, they work with their colleagues up there, and they recognize our needs. With that in mind, I'm concerned about the money. This, for a two-year contract, this is $156,000. I think we have to, we have to find ways to trim our budget, this is one of those things we can do, and I don't know that we have to do this, and so I would probably agree not to support the contract this time. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, and I, I do agree that we have a really good relationship with our electeds nationally, but I think where the power comes in is, is the relationships with the staff. I mean, if we, as electeds, have people come up to us with all of these ideas, that's great, and we can consider them, but at the end of the day, we're going to pass it to our professional staff to make sure that they can get done. And when I've met with our federal lobbyist a couple of times, I mean, he knows these people very well, he works with them very well, and I think that it would be a mistake to not have someone lobbying on our behalf at the federal level, especially with so much that could potentially happen federally for Sedgwick County. I mean, we've seen grants and stuff come to Sedgwick County by the federal government, and if we can help in those ways, I just don't see why we, we would say no to that. So I agree with renewing this contract, I appreciate the work that's happening there, I appreciate the relationships with not only the electeds, but with the staff who, who really do the work day in and out to get these initiatives passed, so thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate the comments, and I understand both perspectives. I would just say, I've only been here a year, so I don't have a whole lot of basis to judge his track record, but I would say this, there's more onus and more emphasis for making sure that our federal legislative, legislative agenda is dialed in, and there's more accountability to performing on some of these things. I would agree, and some of the projects that Commissioner Dennis had mentioned, these are big projects that we need to lobby hard on, and we need to establish maybe better relationship with our lobbyist team on the federal level, aside from our federal delegation, to make sure that we can try to get some of these opportunities here. So I, I'm in a position to where I don't know enough about, because I don't have the relationship with him yet, to make a sound judgment on where we're at with his, this specific company and specific organization, but I'm inclined to support it today and to make sure that our federal legislative delegation and our federal agenda is dialed in and we're holding them accountable to performance, so it's kind of where my head is at on this, Chairman.
All right, any other comments? There's a motion and a second on item number five. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
No.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner, or Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item I, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on December 14th, 2023.
For the record, Joe Thomas, again, purchasing director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of December 14th, we originally started out with five items. The first item that we have, which is road improvements for Webb Road between 79th and 87th Streets South, we are asking to defer to our next BOCC meeting on January 3rd. We'll bring this back to you. Our second one is architectural, the first one now, is architectural and engineering services for the Mental Health Hospital, Project Services, and this proposal, we're asking you to accept for the A&E services is from Pulse Design Group. Our second item is the prevention, early intervention services for the Department of Corrections, and we're asking to please accept the proposals and execute service provider agreements with Community Solutions Incorporated, Seventh Direction Incorporated, Center for Behavioral and Academic Research Incorporated, which is doing business as Adams Academy, and Mental Health Association of South Central Kansas, and is for the amount shown for a period, period of 12 months, and it begins January 1st, 2024, will go through December 31st, 2024, and then has an option to renew for one additional year. Next one is surplus property auction services for the Division of Finance, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Equip Bid Auctions, they're doing business as equipbid.com, and Purple Wave Incorporated doing business as Purple Wave Auction, and this to establish contract pricing at the rates listed for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item is the 2024 recommended insurance premium renewals for risk management, and the recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed, it is for a total cost of $533,332. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have on those items and recommend approval.
Okay, any questions on any of the items as proposed? I don't see any. I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Bids and Contracts from the regular meeting December 14th.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, and Mr. Chairman, you asked at the end of my Board of Bids and Contracts for a short report of the procurement, year-end report for 2023, so I wanted to.
Year-end report, yes, I did ask for a year-end report.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're going to mention some of the tools that we use in getting the contracts for the county, and then we'll tell the number of contracts that came out of each of those methodologies. So the first one is competitive solicitations, which involve sending out a list of specifications, scope of work, scope of service, to a list of vendors, and to also publish that solicitation on a website so that any new vendors or anyone interested in bidding does so. There are two types, there's competitive bids, which are very well-known specifications, and user results in a low bid meeting those specifications or choosing the best value vendor. The second is competitive proposals, and that's usually where we don't have specifications, but we have a problem, we are seeking a solution, we know there'd be a variety of proposals that'd be given to that solution, and so cost is not necessarily the determining factor, it's one of the criteria we use, but it is, it is considered along with other evaluation criteria. Those two, when it comes to competitive bids, usually takes about four to six weeks to conduct between issuance and award, and our competitive proposals can run about eight to 12 weeks, that's one tool. Second is mentioned just recently, just now, about single source. What, what does that term mean? Well, single source is dealing with standardization or a continuation of services that already exist, or maybe the maintaining of a software or system or service, or taking care of a warranty issue. And let me give you a couple examples of where that comes in. So for the county, our enterprise software system is SAP, and so whenever we originally competitively solicited various ERP solution providers, and through that competitive solicitation, we came up with SAP. Subsequently, as the years go by, there are upgrades, there's maintenance, there's warranty that needs to be conducted, but who can do that? SAP. Any other ERP system, Oracle, PeopleSoft, Tyler Munis, they're unable to do that, they don't have the capability or the authority to address that, that's one example. Another one we brought a couple weeks ago is Regional Forensic Science Center, they have a gas chromatograph mass spectrometer, and that's a very highly specialized piece of equipment. It requires an extensive amount of training, it requires an inventory of chemicals and reagents that are used, and it also requires the standardization of the work product or integrity of the process since it will be involved in many legal cases. So there's two examples. The third one, which was mentioned too, was sole source, it's a rare one we use. Most times, sole source comes into play when you're dealing with a new technology or some, or a first vendor that comes to the market with something brand new that no one else has at the time, and is relevant to our, our department needs, and we use that at times. But again, let me remind you, both single source and sole source need to be vetted and need to be used very judiciously. The final one is the joint governmental purchase, and this is one, our public agencies like ourselves, in our terms and conditions, we will put language that says, other public agencies are able to use the contracts we create, it's a courtesy, it helps us not reinvent the wheel. If another agency has created a contract that we can utilize, we make use of that contract, which saves time. contract, which saves time and expense in the county. So with that in mind, I'd like to share with you the number of each of these categories that we created through the year, this year, last year, 20, or this year now, 2023. So for competitive solicitations, we conducted 104 of these competitive solicitations throughout the year. For single source, we utilized that 69 times, sole source 10 times, and then joint governmental purchases 21 times. So we're very happy that we have these tools in our toolkit. It really, the expression we've heard before is if you only had a hammer as a tool, every problem looks like a nail. And so with our departments and the very needs they have, requirements and circumstances, we appreciate the commission allowing the charter, our procurement policy, to allow these various tools to be used, but yet used judiciously and prudently with taxpayer dollars. So that concludes the report I got for you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I had no idea, so it's over 200 solicitations-
Yes, sir.
-in a one-year period? Thanks for that report-
Thank you.
... and the definitions. Any questions? Being none? Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Continuation of item E.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We're back to item E.
Kirk Spontil, Deputy County Counselor. Just as a brief roadmap of how my presentation will flow, first off, I'll provide the definition and a little bit further discussion of vehicle repairs limited. My second would be, I would provide potential motion language for consideration by the commission. It will be lengthy, and it will be addressed those concerns previously raised. The third portion of my presentation will be potential motion language the commission could use to potentially adopt the language I previously gave. So first and foremost, there were discussions about limitation of potential vehicle repairs. Based on my understanding of the commission's preference, vehicle repairs general would be excluded. That includes painting and bodywork to motor vehicles. In terms of vehicle repair limited, the definition presently in the Unified Zoning Code allows for typical uses include businesses engaged in the following activities. Those are electronic tune-ups, brake repairs, including drum turning, air conditioning repairs, transmission and engine repairs, generator and starter repairs, tire, tire repairs, front-end alignments, battery recharging, lubrication, and/or sales, repair, and installation of minor parts and accessories such as tires, batteries, windshield wipers, hoses, and windows. Now, given the general nature of a lot of these, or the simplified nature of a lot of these repairs, a lot of those will be included and allowed except for the sales of minor parts and accessories. Now, with that said, is there any preference that the limitations go further beyond what I just expressed?
Commissioner Dennis.
Quick question, Kirk. On the, on the vehicle limited portion, you mentioned engine, can they R and R an engine or R and R a transmission, or is it just minor maintenance on it?
They, they are allowed to do, at this point, they would be allowed to do repairs on those, so we can strike those if you prefer.
Well, pulling an engine or a transmission is not a minor maintenance.
I, I can adjust the language then, right now.
I'm okay with everything but that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Kirk.
With that in mind, hearing nothing further, second portion of this would be the potential language for approval for consideration with modifications by the board. You don't have to do this, obviously, this is within your final discretion, but it would be that the board move to approve the zone change from SF 20 to GC General Commercial to commercial parking with protective overlay 412 as presented by the Metropolitan Area Planning Department on November 9th, 2023, but with the following modifications. Those modifications are as follows. Section 6 of the protective overlay is modified to read "commercial parking area is restricted, is restricted to 10,000 square feet in size. The parking area and driveways shall be paved with an impervious surface that minimizes the potential for groundwater contamination. In addition, there shall be no washout or washing of the commercial vehicles on premises." An additional condition is add to the protective overlay incorporating the requirements and restrictions of the letter submitted by the applicants titled "applicant's description of onsite operations," except that the maximum number of commercial vehicles over 26,000 gross vehicle weight rating shall not exceed a total of seven, and the running of said commercial vehicles shall not occur outside the hour submitted in the letter. Number three, a second condition is add to the protective overlay incorporating the lighting requirements of UCC 4B4, which indicates outdoor lighting sources, including base or pedestal, pole and fixture, shall employ cutoff luminaries to minimize light trespassing glare, and shall be mounted at a height not exceeding one-half the distance from the neighboring lot, unless evidence is provided to satisfaction of the zoning administration that the light source will be aimed or shielded such that light source is not visible from the neighboring lot. Light sources shall be limited to 15 feet in height within 200 feet of residential zoning districts. And last, a third condition is added to the protective overlay that limits, that prevents vehicle repair general and limits other vehicle repair to those repairs specifically identified in the Unified Zoning Code definition of vehicle repair limited, except for repairs of engines and transmissions and the sales of minor parts and accessories, which are prohibited. Now, next steps would be, if the commission were interested in this language, your potential motion could be moved to adopt the motion language as presented by the deputy county counselor, and allow the correlating resolution to be signed and published based on the following reasons, at which time you might provide some golden factors that went into your consideration for approval.
Applicant, did you understand the, what was explained?
Yes, sir. The hours of operation, the commercial parking at 10,000 square feet, paved driveway parking, no washing, seven trucks and light restrictions. I understand.
Okay. That's helpful. Commissioner Dennis?
I just have a comment. I appreciate the applicant working with us, but I really appreciate the staff coming up with a motion like that in such a short period of time. That was fantastic work that we're able to get through this agenda item today rather than having to defer it. So I want to thank the staff for that. Thank you.
Okay. So Kirk, I will make a motion. Can you repeat what you said, and then I'll add the golden? Not just the last part of what you said.
Yes. It would be moved to adopt the motion language as presented by the deputy county counselor, and allow the correlating resolution to be signed and published based on the following reasons.
Okay. Consistent with my first. Well, we have to have one reason from the, the, what item are we on here? No, I'm sorry. The golden rules, that one, the one that I had said before, that's what I'm trying to look for. Do you remember which one I? Sorry about this, everybody. Bear with me.
Top of the rules?
That one. Based on the golden rules, number two, the zoning and uses of properties nearby, added to the motion. So, or amend your, I'll add that amended motion is that we adopt the motion as presented by the deputy county counselor with the, with the added part that says, do, as a reasoning is golden factors zoning case number two, the zoning and uses of properties nearby.
Thank you. And also, just to clarify, is it also part of your consideration that the conditions being imposed today help protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and limit the detriments to the other surrounding properties?
Yes.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Clerks, sorry that we are extra work today. Okay. There was a motion, and was there a second?
I would second.
Okay. Motion second, thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank everybody for being patient and very respectful and professional, and best wishes for happy holidays. We will go to the, we'll continue on if there's commotion to depart, and we will continue with the meeting. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Tom. Consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items J through V.
Okay. Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the consent items J through V. Are there any questions or comments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve items J through V.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay. We will, we will recess the general meeting of the county commission and call to order the governing body of Fire District number one. Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
I am present, as Commissioner Dennis said. Okay. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Anybody from the public? Nobody signed up to address the commission on public agenda in Fire District number one, so we will go to the next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of November 8th, 2023.
Commissioners, if it's all right, I'd be like to combine items A and B, which is approve of the minutes of the November 8th and the November 15th meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Notice the other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item C, charitable donation agreement between Sedgwick County Fire District number one and Gina Nungeser.
No, you didn't. Good. I think we were briefed on this in the agenda meeting. Do you want to summarize this, Tom? This was a-
Charitable donation.
Charitable donation, so.
Well, we need, we need a fire rep, too, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then Chief, when you're coming up, if you could, there is a consent item D that is also a charitable donation. Could you cover that on your new business item? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners, Chair, Deputy Chief Ray Hensley, Sedgwick County Fire District number one. We have a training house, first of all, a donation, a charitable donation to the Fire District for $1,000, I believe. It's made to several other entities within Sedgwick County. And we also have a, the specific item you're talking about is a donation of a house for training purposes. We will utilize it to train our, any recruiter casualty we have coming up next year, as well as our company training that we do monthly and periodically through, with different departments.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for the explanation, and thank you for the donation. I'll make a motion that we approve the charitable donation from, from Gina Nungeser.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stills, again, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items D through H.
I'll just make a note that item D was just described by Deputy Chief, so thank you for that clarification. I'll make a motion that we approve items D through H.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Other.
Is there anything to address the commission on, in other, on the Fire District?
No.
I don't see any. So we will, when we have no executive session on Fire, so we will, we will adjourn the Fire District number one and return to the, the general meeting of commissioners. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Does anybody have anything to report on their committees, commissioners? I don't see any. Okay. So next item.
Other.
Anything under other, other than a great holiday season, Merry Christmas and all that? Go ahead.
Chairman, I just wanted to just say, this is our one, our yearly opportunity to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I, I love being the county commissioner, I love Sedgwick County, I love our employees, we have great staff, I love working with my colleagues. I'm just a very grateful person today, and thank you for everyone's engagement with Sedgwick County Commission. This is a tremendous honor to be here, and I'm just very thankful for, we've had a great year. We've got a lot done this year, and I'm extremely proud of Sedgwick County in so many different, so many different ways. I would, I would compare us to any county in Kansas, I think we are the best. Not toot my own horn, I toot the horn of my colleagues and our staff and our employees, they're the ones that make it great. But I just want to say, as we get ready for hopefully a small break with family and friends, that my wish is that they would have a safe, wonderful time with their family and friends, and that I want to just say Merry, from my heart to theirs, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I think you nicely said how we all feel. So it's been a, it has been a good year, and looking forward to a greater, or as good or better '24. So, anything else? Any other comments? Next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, we have two executive sessions. We're going to go to our first meeting and come back, and we will have a motion for the second one at a later time. So I'm just going to focus on the first one, we're going to be going upstairs for this executive session. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 40 minutes until 12, until 12:45 for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. In order, in order to discuss pending litigation and legal, legal advice on county matters, that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 12:45.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay. We're going upstairs, and we will be back at 12:45.
Okay, we have returned. We have returned from executive session. No action taken. Next item please. Another executive session. Okay, that's it. All right. So we've returned from the original executive session, no action taken. Mr. Chairman, and I do know that PBS stops televising this at 1:00 PM, but we're going to need to continue our meeting. The people can check back with us on our streaming platforms of YouTube and Facebook. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners recesses into executive session for 45 minutes until 1:32 PM for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land in buildings for the establishment of a state psychiatric hospital in Central County, that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 1:32 PM.
Second. Motion and second. Any questions? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howe, Chairman Meitzner.
Okay. See you 1:32.
Okay, I think we're live. Okay.
We are not. We have to hold just a second.
He just gave me the thumbs up. So we are live. So we've returned from executive session. There's no action taken. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission at this time? Don't say anything. So we are adjourned.